I call this meeting to order. Please note the meeting is recorded and livestreamed at www.crpusdboard. Members of the public are entitled to speak to any item on the agenda here immediately after the item is called by the board by name or following background information provided related to the item at the board president's discretion. Each person is entitled to speak on any agenda item only once at any meeting, although board members may seek additional information, participation in debate on any item before the board shall be limited to members of the board. Please fill out a comment card which will be given to the board president indicating the item he wishes to address. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual and 20 minutes per item. I'd like to call up for the flag salute Jasmine Lopez. Jasmine Lopez is a fifth grade student in Tina Martina's class at Montevista. She recently participated in our, in Montevista, Art Reflections Contest, was a spelling bee representative to the county spelling bee, and she was on the Montevista North Bay Science Challenge Team. She also finished second place in her future show competition this last week.
I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am the principal of the agenda. I would like to note that I got an email from Jen Odevich who is unavailable tonight, so there will be no more of our slide executives participating.
The agenda, the consent agenda, I'd like to pull D, J, and L. D, E, and J, and L.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Sir.
Second?
Second.
First and a second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Item two, presentations. There are no public comment requests for this item. Technology Middle School.
Good evening. My name is Sarah McKee. I'm the principal of this lovely school, Technology Middle School. We did a one-to-one iPad pilot starting at the beginning of the year for our sixth graders. Dr. Hayley requested that I put together something showing all of the iPad usage at our school, and I picked up, picked out, sorry, forty lovely students, Aurora Rocket, Maya Beck, and Lizeth Vicencio, to put together a video on how they use iPads in the classroom. And I just want to point out, one of the girls drew that. She's a total artist. She drew it on her iPad. So I've been helping them kind of in and out for the last three or four days, and they're very excited and giddy about the video, so I'd like to talk to you.
I'm here to organize my own documents without having to worry about training goals and like privacy. I don't like other people missing my time.
Stop pulling back and forth to the library to get a couple of questions.
I do my own iPad instead of my engaging because like we have Google Docs and we do the type of assignments and Google Classroom. It's easier to figure out where all their assignments are and get more connected with your teacher. So if you have any questions, you can bring it on my own Google Classroom, like you have the projects and like working out stuff that helps me, or doing my homework, or whatever you want.
For school, I think my favorite app would be STD Math because like it helps out with like your math and where you are, and it's just like the level gets harder and like helps.
What is your favorite app for school?
My favorite app is App Book because it's really fun and a learning experience.
It's allowed me to return to some technology assignments that I haven't been able to work with the students because having a one-to-one iPad means that every student can participate.
One of the ways that iPads have helped my students in class is that they're able to take them home and explore with other programs like with art and video making, and then we use those programs within the classroom. And so the kids get to some way play with, uh, programs because augment the learning in classroom. Another way that iPads work is I get out of science and the kids are more aware of what they need to do through the classroom and looking at making things on calendars and such. I find that iPads are useful and that the kids enjoy them and it's a nice connection with the creative mind.
My favorite teaching application would probably be the Google Classroom platform, particularly Google Slides. So before students wanted iPads, my teaching goals didn't necessarily involve 21st century skills on a daily basis. Now with one-to-one iPads, I can involve skills like typing, slides, all of these different 21st century skills that students may need as they enter high school or workforce or college. I can now incorporate those goals into my daily teaching.
This is the disaster survival game. You receive that the iPads are plugged into the monitors in order to view the game. This is my event, we're coming on the artwork for the game. So you receive that she's doing the thumbnail right now.
Here I'm showing the Earth Day team how to put the cards on the poster with my iPad. Here in the Zara, we're working on the Google Spell Jam with our iPads.
I'm running a little bravery. We started a project to make it to disaster survival game. We did this project for Michelle West and Miss Mason's class, and we used an iPad as a testing showcase.
People who walked around came to our booth and got to test the game on a provided iPad. We could hook it up to a monitor and have people see how the game played.
Throughout the year, we've been, we've used iPads in every classroom at all. Francis, recently we've been using We've Up's Math. This program is used to enhance students' ability to remember math facts.
We've also used on our recent project, Google Challenge Your Hand. We cannot have done it without the iPads. Google Earth is not accessible on the phone books, so that the project would have been out of question if we didn't have the iPads. Thanks.
Of course.
Thanks. For washing. And special thanks to Ms. Munee.
Are there any questions or comments? Amazing what they can do on this thing. It's taken us a long time to figure out kind of, yeah, some of the easy apps, but see what they can do with them.
I'm not, I don't have any time to say it.
You're not good talking to your daughter?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item three, communications. Students work on the reports, Samantha McKinney?
Hello. So the school year is flying by and is already March, which means students are getting excited about many things like spring break, prom, and for seniors, their college acceptance letters. Union Week was yet again a success for Rancho, and we ended it with an assembly that presented songs, dances, and traditional clothing from many different cultures. ASB is currently accepting applications for next year's class, and baseball won their first league game against Cardinal Newman. And we have the spirit week next week to end the third quarter and to transition our students into spring break, which will begin April 2nd. Our issue commissioners have been putting together a week of presentations with speakers in honor of Women's History Month, and we're calling it Women's Week. Today was our executive board elections, and we have Nafe Nafe versus Keatlinger Bay for president, Luis Cervera for vice president, Trinity Taylor Yama Noah for secretary, Rihanna Davis for treasurer, and Amelia Torres for school board representative. During the election, we had two senators of foreign wars come to and observe the voting system we use, which mimics today's real electoral process. And last but not least, prom will be on May 5th, and tickets will be on sale after spring break. Fifty-five dollars with an ASB, without an ASB card, and fifty dollars with an ASB card.
How many tickets?
Hello, everybody. Things in Tech High are going well as we wrap up the third quarter. Our seniors and juniors are prepared for prom coming this April 14th, and tickets are being sold to the end of March. Seniors are preparing for graduation and other year-end activities as college acceptances roll in, and we will soon be putting up senior class pictures with their post-high school plan. The rest of the school has been working with Ms. Dory to plan their courses for the next year, and many students have begun using Naviance, our new counseling and career program. Our students participated in a parent emergency communication drill, ensuring that any disaster there is, in any disaster there is efficient and quick communication with families. Tech High students also participated in every 15 minutes alongside Rancho students, and all can agree that the experience was very well done and very impactful. Our National Arms Society Club hosted a two-week-long Penny Wars campaign between second-period classes. They raised over $500, which will be donated to a charity of the winning class's choice. Our Internet Club also hosted a fundraiser for charity that raised over $400 through a movie night. Our robotics is gearing up for its spring all-nighter in a fun event that boosts the school's sense of community through a night of video games and sleep deprivation, all to raise money for our robotics team. This past weekend, our other club, another one of our clubs, Math Club, had five students attend a Berkeley Math competition at UC Berkeley, a highly competitive international competition. On February 24th, several of our juniors participated in Sonoma County History Day competition, presenting their exhibits, websites, and documentaries. Three groups and three individual projects from THS were selected to represent Sonoma County in the state history day competition in May. Sophomore and junior science classes participated in the county's scheme showcase, presenting their science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics projects. Spring sports have been working hard and having fun despite the rain, and they are all looking forward to great league performances this year. That's all for the news at Tech High. Thank you.
Thank you. Item C, receive official correspondence. We sent a letter from Sonoma County Superintendent of School. Item four, consent agenda. There are no public comment requests for this item, so can I have a motion to approve consent agenda items A through C, E through I, K, and M?
I'll second.
Second, first, and a second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Item four D, ratification of commercial warrant.
So I pulled four D for the reason I got an anonymous letter in the mail informing me that one of our vendors, JC, I think Janitoral Supplies, is, which we purchased janitorial supplies, they sent me this spreadsheet, saying that we purchased $115,000 last year, but they also alluded to the fact that one of our employees' father was in a car accident and I talked to her, sent communication with Rob verifying that, but at the same time, Rob, our superintendent, he was informed, informing me that we did a bidding process for that and that individual, Josh Savage, was not in that bidding process. So thank you for that. I would like to, just for my thoroughness, and I'd like to see that bidding process and then who the other vendors were before I could, you know, move on this. I, or JC. So if that information can be sent to me sometime next week or whenever, I appreciate it. I'd just like to know who the vendors were.
Oh, yeah, that's all. We have, we have all the documents.
I'd like to see that. Thank you.
Lita, would you like a brief overview of the process?
Sure, sure. You can leave that now next week.
So we have had a practice of going out to bid for custodial supplies every few years, every five or six years. It's not a huge dollar amount. It's about $100,000, $200,000, $10,000 a year. But in back of 2015, our executive director facilities became concerned that our budget seemed to be not going as far as it had in the past. In addition, there were some concerns about possible adverse health effects to our employees from some of the chemicals that were being used, and the floors did not seem to be holding up when they were waxed. The chairboards seemed to be wearing off the wax, and it just didn't look good. So Larry Henderson, our purchasing specialist, went through and gathered bid information from Clean Source, which was our provider at the time, Hilliard, JC Paper, and Fishman's. Fishman's bid was not completely responsive. There were some items that they didn't really supply price. And for our size and the amount of work, we prefer to have it all with one vendor. Now, we do actually separate our garbage can liners because there's one source that's much cheaper than any of these companies, but in general, we like to prefer to deal with one vendor. And the way it works, we kind of have a market basket approach where we go through and say, here are the things we buy the most, because typically when you go through this process, no one is cheapest on every single product. So you look at where you spend the most money, cost it out, and JC Paper gave us the option of using the paper dispensers that we already had so that we didn't have to pay to replace those. Typically, you buy those over a four-, five-year term, so as you, if you stay with a vendor for five years, they're yours to keep, and we had quite a few in that situation. So JC Paper was the cheapest option, so that's what we chose. And it is true that Josh's father is the sales manager, but Josh, he's not an owner of the company. Josh was not part of the bidding process. Larry really did the work to do the comparisons, so that's what we did.
So if I could just get a copy of that, that bid stuff, I'd appreciate it, because I know how the district has been in the past for relatives. When I got re-elected one time and Janice was a substitute, they came to me and said, Janice can hold her substitute on my due to conflict of interest.
Because you're on board, because Josh is not on the board, so.
Well, the reason, yeah, okay. But the reason I'm on the board is I can vote for the salary of that, and it appears that the director of facilities could, you know, direct that contract, but if he wasn't in the bidding and they were cheapest, I just want to verify that.
Right, right. And, and we are not barred from awarding a bid, if you will. We don't actually do a formal bid process. This is more of an informal price comparison, but we are barred from awarding it to the lowest-cost provider, especially if there's a family member there. The point is to be sure that we're saving money and getting the best prices.
But we can certainly share the bid.
Yeah, and then we, and we review this every, you said every five years, so when was this bid process?
This was in 2015, so we're a couple of years away. And it's one of those things, given all the projects we have going on, it isn't really worth bidding every year. Just like for office supplies, we periodically, every five or six years, will look to be sure that Office Depot is still giving us the best deal. And it's the same thing. You can cherry pick copy paper and go to Walmart during the before-school sales or Target and get copy paper cheaper, but oh, wait, you're picking it up yourself, and, you know, on and on. We always look at the market basket approach and say, what do we buy? And overall, who gives us the best deal? Who will deliver? Let's not even forget those kinds of issues.
Thank you. I might like to get a copy of the lead. I think it would be, I just have this, which shows this spreadsheet for, okay? I'd still like to see a copy. Okay.
I moved it. B?
D. I moved it. I think, well, I moved that we pay JC Paper the amount that's noted already paid at the register.
So just, we need a approval for.
We have to vote all at once. Oh, four D?
Yeah, item four D. That's all we can do.
Okay, thank you. I moved that we ratified commercial orders.
Second. Item first and a second, all of us in favor? Ayes. Item four, J. Ratification of special education staff agreement with $100 stamp making of the stamping agency for 2017 and 2020.
So again, my busy day, everyone's busy day. I sent Rob an email like last night looking at this, so thank you for your response. I would just like to move, this is a contract that allows us to hire a special ed person, but your response back to me was we're hiring a person because someone's going to be on leave or, or another employee left. I would just like to see that as kind of a pit paragraph to say why we're going to this, this company, because I didn't know, I didn't know what this company provided. So I was guessing, like, why are we hiring Sunbelt? What is it for? You explained it to me, and if that paragraph was there, it would save me pulling this.
That would be, that would be a lot of paragraphs. We have a lot of different contracts like this, so I'm happy to respond, but, you know, as you've seen month in and month out, we have quite a few.
Well, then I'll keep pulling it, I don't know.
Well, you can certainly, yes, you don't have to, I mean, whether, the only reason to pull it is if you want to vote on it, so if you just want information, you don't.
But if I were, if I were a public member, I was reading this contract, it doesn't say that we're, you know, someone is on leave and will replace that person. If I were the person, yes, looking at this, I think, well, what's this for? Are we going to hire a bunch of people? Is it, you know, kind of, what is, I realize that if we're hiring something for some type of independent contractor, special ed, I'm reading this and not being an expert and not knowing how a whole special ed program, you got to know what it is. I'm just asking for a little summary paragraph that says, the reason we're, you know, doing this is to replace, we have, we've got our, our warrants, or not warrants, but we've got our HR list of people retiring, going out on leave, you know, there are employees, it's pretty clear that's what mine, but in this, I just wasn't.
Okay.
I have a question about Sunbelt. Is it true that with Sunbelt contractors that they are communicating with students and doing IDPs and communicating with admins online through FaceTime or whatever? It's a national company, so they could pull consultants from anywhere in the country. Is that how it's conducted?
They, they do that somewhere, they don't do that here.
So is there an advantage to having a special ed person in the same room with the student and parents and others during the IDP versus doing it through FaceTime, which Sunbelt advertises that's one of the things they do, is communicate through FaceTime?
Interesting research topic. I am very familiar that there are companies doing that sort of thing, but that's not this item, and I don't believe that's what we're doing here.
Well, that's what Sunbelt advertises on their website.
There, there are quite a few that provide all kinds of therapy services now online.
So you can say with 100% certainty that none of these consultants are going to be communicating?
No, I can't say that.
So it could be.
But, yeah, I know it belongs, yes.
So is that good to have IDP done through internet or in person? What is the better way?
That's, that's not this agenda.
Yeah, having to make that a future topic. I know Orselva has, or Special Education Local Planner, has done the research on that, and they, they've advocated that in the past, so there must be some basis for them doing that, but it's not something I deeply immersed myself in that research.
Can I get a motion to ratify the special education staff agreement with Sunbelt Staffing? L, say stamping agency for 2017 and 2020.
I'll second.
First and second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Item L, ratification of special education staff agreement with MedScan therapy services for 2017 and 2020.
So ditto, I just didn't know what this was until I, because you're replacing either employee that's on leave or employee that needs to be turned being closed, so.
It was another contract.
Yeah, another contract. So I just, can you explain that which is? But I mean, if you're reading this as a, a person from the public, I think you should understand.
Can I get a motion for ratification of special education staff agreement with MedScan therapy services for 2017 and 2020?
I'll second.
First and a second, all of us in favor? Ayes. Any opposed? Item five, educational services. There are no public comment requests for this item. Item five A, elementary physical education requirement, $1,200, second trimester.
One more time. We all good here?
Yep.
This is the last one? We have, we have the third trimester and no one else. All right.
Is this individual still going after other schools?
The legislature changed the state law afterwards to bar that from happening. Unfortunately, we received that.
Item B, local control accountability plan update from the town hall.
Thank you. I wanted to thank everyone who attended the town hall meeting. Many of the folks are sitting in this room tonight, so thank you for coming to that on the 28th. We had a good turnout of staff and solid parent representation. Thank you to the board members who attended, and it was a good opportunity for us to discuss district needs and our continuous improvement process. There was a brief presentation of the LCAP, an overview of the goals and the eight state priorities. We talked about the annual update process and explained how stakeholder input was gathered to help with our needs. And we had a good and robust discussion about how the district was doing, and we had some real key takeaways and some areas of growth for us. Some of the key takeaways were, appreciate this, everything is awesome, and we appreciate the positive messages coming from our schools in the district. Again, a goal is to continue to increase parent involvement, that facilities are in good repair, communication from schools and district is strong, that the students are connected to school, and there's lots and there's lots of opportunity for students to be involved in extracurricular activities. And that the students are feeling safe at school. And some of the areas of growth that were discussed were helping to continue to differentiate our instruction for our accelerated learners. Uh, continued support for career tech offerings and hands-on classes at the high school level. And continued high push for rigor and high expectations for student learning. So it was a positive meeting, and appreciate everybody who came and gave their input. And stay tuned for some surveys that will come in your way for both our teachers and our parents as we continue with our annual update process. And I will be reporting back to you here real shortly with our annual update and the LCAP plan. I am currently also going around and meeting with students as stakeholder groups and having a wonderful time. I was at TechMiddles today, and I've been visiting the TPA, I'm Richard Crane. And I took to say my one favorite moment right now in asking kids, you know, kind of, what, if you could have three wishes, and what would your best wish for any school be? My favorite answer so far has come from a kindergarten. And they were, he was thinking real hard, "And how can you make your school better?" And he said, "We need flamingos." Because who doesn't need that at a school? So this was like the best part of the job, flamingos. So, uh, yeah, again, appreciating the input and continuing to meet with the LCAP committee. So flamingos aside, Sunbelt have really great suggestions for school improvement, so, always good.
Dr. Seager? How many people attended the town hall?
Uh, I think we had 19 to 20 people there.
And how many parents?
Let's see, mm, off the top of my head, I would say we had about eight parents.
So, a challenge, how do we all draw in more parents?
Great, call a friend, tell them to come to the meetings. Yes, bring folks.
What you went over was, you know, district and principal and multiple parents. Great ideas and good feedback, but it would be, I'm sure you'd love to expand, expand that group. So whatever outreach way we have, I know one principal, Rod, asked, "Yes, one parent, why are you here?" And the principal answered, "Oh." You know, they're curious and so that. So if we can expand that, I know everyone's working six jobs and busy and that kind of stuff, but your education for your child is going to be the most important thing to invest in. So if we can instill that, just with parents or round up the free cookies or something.
You bet.
Whatever it takes, yeah, next time.
And we do too through our D-LAC and our E-LAC meetings too for English Language Learner Parents as well. So we do get input from other committees as well. But again, we would love increased parent involvement, absolutely.
I think that's sort of a challenge statewide. I know when we go to CSBA, California PTA comes and they do a presentation about different strategies to use, different times of day to do it, or bring them in, like you said. And it really does seem to be a challenge right now for PTA's and schools across the state to get people to come in and provide input.
It's a challenge we need to take off?
I think we have to.
Goal three, goal three, the LCAP, increase parent involvement.
We need to be better at it. However, however it's done, because I mean, last time, that email that I got from that individual, the end of the, from a leading, intelligent people in the world was saying, you know, "Code of the future is not the answer left, it's parent participation." Not that code of the future is not important, you know, so I strongly agree. If you invest in your kids' education, they're going to be so further ahead. And then the parent is not investing in that stuff.
Thank you, Dr. Haly. Item 6, personal services. There are no public comment requests for this item. 6A, ratification of personal action report 1718-8A, certificate.
I want to, um, can I say a couple of words about Lenny Lowry, who's retiring?
Usually say that for Meg when they recognize him in class.
Okay, I'll just say it during the custody report.
I move we ratify personal action report 1718-8A, certificate.
I'll say it. I can't say the reason.
I have a first and a second, all those in favor? Aye. And opposed? Item B, ratification of personal action report 1718-8B, classified.
I move to ratify personal action report 1718-8B, classified.
I'll say it.
I have first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 7, business and operations services. There are no public comment requests for this item. 7A, acceptance of proposition 39 on audit reports of the year ended June 30th, 2017.
I move we set proposition 39 on audit reports for the year ending February 2018.
I'll say it. I have first and a second, are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B, Power School Student Information.
The information was in last month's agenda. Unfortunately, I wasn't here to talk about it due to my injury, but most of the same information is in here again as well. We've been involved in this process now for several months and believe this is the right solution for our district.
I have a question. This is a five, $505,000 contract.
It depends on whether or not there's an exit, but okay.
The first year is about $197,000.
I believe it's $147,000. But I'm listening.
Yeah.
What's your question?
Can I interrupt? You said that, and then you can go on. Because I always have a hard time doing the numbers. Is year one, $197,000? And then year two goes to $147,000? Or is year one, $147,000? I read it as...
The year one cost is estimated to be $197,040.
Okay.
Including $32,763.
Okay.
So that's an estimate.
All right.
The ongoing cost after the first year is estimated to be $147,717.
Plus 3% increase.
So the, the, the reason it's estimated, many of the costs are associated with how many students there are or how many students are using a particular add-on product, like athletic participation.
You get charged for our EK student?
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah. The cost for the ETKs are included, so not the rest of the budget.
Okay.
Sorry. So it could be a three-year contract, totally $500,000.
Our goal would be that we retain this company for a long time. Now we are. This is not a process we want to go through long.
No, I understand. So are we going into a three-year contract or a one-year contract for additional?
Three.
Three. Okay, all right.
Okay, so it's about $500,000. So, um, the problem I have when I went over the memo, I think it was from Ann Bear, uh, with Jennifer, is it was stated in there that Eagle Software, which provides the Ares system, which we used before and we were pretty happy with, um, before we went to Quick Schools. Um, is that, um, they said that Eagle Software was non-responsive. But Sonia Cassett, who's the director of sales for Eagle Software, said that Robert Gonzalez canceled their meeting because he was ill and never followed through. And so I feel like the board is not getting accurate information about Eagle. And what I'm wondering is, we're going to spend $500,000, which is a massive increase from Quick Schools and Ares before that. And what if Eagle Software can provide a great SIS and save us $50,000, $100,000, $200,000? Then wouldn't that be financially irresponsible not to have an appropriate bidding process so that we see what's available at what cost? It just seems like this is being brushed through. We could possibly be wasting hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayers' money for this system, which I understand it's a great system. Maybe they have like SIS, you know, but, um, I feel like we've been told by the state and the company to watch our spending. And why would we just throw away $100,000, $200,000 because we want to rush through this process and get the ad like of SIS? And, and, and the other issue is, that's one issue. The other issue is, aren't we getting accurate information from the superintendent about things like this? Because that memo was inaccurate. And she is willing to come to Ron Park to meet with the ID department and others to show what she can provide, and I don't see why we shouldn't hear from them. Why, why don't we just, you know, say that they were non-responsive? And that's not the case at all?
Well, you layered many things there. Number one, the reason we transitioned from Ares in the first place was their nonresponsiveness. And many of the power users that needed to use it were very dissatisfied with it. So that's, that's why we did that. Secondly, as has been stated many, many times, the contract that we have with Quick Schools was at a significant discount because we were willing to invest time and our staff with them in developing a customized student information system.
And it was a disaster.
Well, that's, that's your opinion, actually. We've discussed that, and, um, you know, we, we believe we learned a lot about, and our staff learned a lot about, the workings of the student information system. So I feel like the investment of our time over the last three years has been valuable. I don't think it's helpful to throw around terms like that, but I'm not sure what you're basing them on.
When parents are getting information about other students that are not their children?
You know, that's, that's, again, you're certainly entitled to your opinion.
Oh, that's a fact. It's not a...
Well, that's, that's fine.
You can deny the facts, but they're the facts.
Uh, the process that we've gone through, we spoke to the United Board meeting starting in January. Um, we reached out to, while originally we were going to reach out to the four largest student information system providers, one of which we determined not to, which was in the campus. Uh, the other three were Luminate, Power School, and Eagle Software, which produces Ares, which again, we have a lot of familiarity with from previous usage. I am completely unclear on what you would be basing your information on with regards to Sonia and what your connection is to Eagle Software. Um, but I did hear from her, and I asked her some pointed questions regarding that. Apparently, someone had contacted her and misrepresented themselves as an employee of our school district, so that, that has me concerned. Uh, but nevertheless, what some random community member does, some random community member does, so...
Excuse me.
I asked her a pointed question. Did you reach out to Robert after his February 26th emails? Robert is Robert, our IT supervisor. And so why did you respond? See, it is true that he had a health concern, but that entire time, he was responding to emails and phone calls. And Sonia did acknowledge that, she did in fact hear from Robert and, um, back in February, on February 26th, and never provided a quote. Now, I will say this, as a, as a potential customer, I've never had to aggressively pursue a vendor. Uh, in fact, the exact opposite was the situation with both Luminate and Power School. They were more than willing to meet with us, more than willing to provide information, more than willing to provide quotes that we could look at. So I really don't know what you're basing your Ares information on, and I'd be happy to meet at some time and discuss that.
No, I'm basing it on some information from Chris Agilis, who contacted Sonia Cassett. And first of all, I don't appreciate you smearing a member of the public who's worked very hard on districtations, works on one of the committees. And I don't think it's good for them.
I have no idea what you're talking about, so I know...
I don't think it's good form to say that someone in our community misrepresented themselves to this...
I'm not saying that, Sophie.
You just said it.
Sophie did it. Sophie said that, that's what she said.
Well, all I know, all I know is that you're avoiding the main question is, why did we get inaccurate information in the memo saying that Ares was non-responsive when they are willing, Sonia is willing to come here and make a presentation? And I think if it's going to save $100,000 or $200,000 of the taxpayers' money, we should slow the process down a little. That's fiscally responsible. If we can get a good SIS from Eagle Software, then we should slow the process down. And, and we need accurate information, and we need to hear from Sonia about what they're willing to provide. And I don't see why you're so opposed to that.
Oh, yeah. As a parent, who was here during the Ares days and during the recent days, and haven't seen the PowerPoint days yet, but, or Power School days, excuse me. Got PowerPoint in the brain, it couldn't work. But I can tell you, as a family, we weren't all that impressed with Ares. There are a lot of different things going on in there.
Others will be.
Well, you're not a parent in the district, I'm speaking as a parent.
I'm a parent.
You don't have a child in the district.
I don't have a child here. Actually, then, but that's a, not that you use Ares.
So, so if you redetermine your decision, if you ruled out Eagle Software, then put that in the memo saying, "We ruled out Eagle Software," and be honest. Don't say that they were non-responsive.
I, I was just interrupted. I was trying to look at this year's. Now, the current system, I mean, we don't have too many problems with. We're able to see our child's grades. We're able to use it minimally as it is. Well, as a parent, I actually use it.
Do you want the experience data to see what we're looking at?
No, I don't have the experience data to see. I hear a lot of teachers and parents and...
I, I think, you know, I, I have no problem at this point having, um, conference with Dr. Haley and having looked at and having knowledge on Ares from prior and looking at this.
Well, be honest about it. Say you ruled them out. Don't say that they were not responsive.
You're continually saying, "Be honest," is grossly inaccurate.
I know, but so I am...
You're putting words and other people's not, so...
At this point, at this point, I'd like to, to move that we enter the contract with Power School student information.
Even if it's worth giving $200,000.
I have a first, right, a second?
A second.
I have a first and a second, all those in favor?
One more question.
So, obviously, this is going to cost more money, um, which is, you know, could be a great deal if this helps parents and that. Where, where's Ian, you know, we're spending more, which is reality. It will be what it costs for information systems. Do we have those funds that's coming out of the general fund?
It is a general fund expense.
Right, so is there any problem with allocating the funds to this?
The incremental cost is for a learning management system, which is something that Eagle Software does not offer.
Right.
It is something that, we did get a quote from Luminate. Their combined SIS and LMS was more expensive than Power Schools.
Okay.
We are going to need an LMS, a learning management system, to analyze our student data in order to do the things we need to do for the LCAP and to improve student achievement. So we won't need N-Rate anymore, so that degrades part of the cost.
Right.
The increase roughly is $50,000 a year. In order to really get the student data and be able to analyze it, which is something our teachers and principals have been begging for, I think it's well worth the $50,000, and we do have those funds available, so...
Okay, good, thanks.
All right, I have a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Item 8, board services. I have public comment requests from Larry Holstein, and I've asked Dr. Haley to put a timer on the screen. We are adhering to our three-minute board policy. Mr. Holstein?
Good evening, board trustees, superintendent Haley, district staff members of the Teachers Association and the community. My name is Laurie Dean, taxing resident and citizen voter of Ron Park. When I first addressed this body in December of last year, my topic was among several items, and it continues to be a severe lack of adequate communication to other organization and meaningful caskian procedures. We just saw an example of that. Not only is the... Not only is effective communication meaningful and desired, it's critical for any fine organization. I'm here today to address this board on one fundamental question and example, in ineffective and non-transparent communication. And that is, the lack of a durable, consistent, and ongoing district-wide, school-wide comprehensive safety plan as required by California law. Recent horrendous and concerning events of terror on our campuses nationwide, and if you've been listening on the news, another event happened in Maryland today, has brought to the nervous service of communities concern and need and demand to review, and if needed, improve our emergency response plan. California has always been in the forefront with this legislation such as SB 187, which mandates the creation and upkeep of a comprehensive safety plan to be maintained by each school and validated and approved by the local school boards. At the end of the 1997 legislative session, the California legislature enacted Senate Bill 187, which makes school districts and county offices of education responsible for the development of comprehensive school-wide safety plans in each of the schools for which the district and COE is responsible. These comprehensive school safety plans were mandated to be initiated and completed by September 1 of 1998, over 20 years ago. The intention of this comprehensive plan was to develop a continuous and continually improving working plan involving the elements and agencies of the community, and working together to develop and implement a complete process for addressing most every type of egregious attack upon our schools, its staff, and most importantly, our precious children. Mind you, this was first undertaken in 1997 and 98. Districts and schools all over the state rallied available resources, local fire and police departments, local sheriffs, local counseling services, Red Cross affiliates, and other organizations that would follow a cohesive and regulated plan from year to year with frequent drills occurring at the beginning of the academic year with complete knowledge and processes available to the community. Plans were to be made, available to parents and any local stakeholder upon reviewing. Those plans were designed to be current, timely, and updated at the beginning of each academic year. Recently, the state superintendent of public education announced a renewed effort to challenge each school district under its jurisdiction to enhance their own plans as well as to raise up the accountability, a notch by establishing a formal auditing committee to review, A, the integrity of the plans, as well as to, B, address those schools who may not have complied with the safety mandate. Now, the school boards, district trustees, board trustees are given the greater task of ensuring that every school maintains a robust and comprehensive safety plan, incorporating local resources for support, identifying drills, and most importantly, ensuring comfort and ensuring communication during these highness events. Yes.
Your time is up.
I understand. Case in point, I have, I'm completing. My questions are this. Why is it so difficult for common members of the community to convince the local schools merely to request to view schools' comprehensive plans without question? In fact, just recently, when 13 community members walked into a 11 school on Friday, 10 out of 11 schools dropped the safety plan.
Mr. Holgi, you need to sit down.
Number two, why is it that even if the March 1st of this past month, 13 schools refused to drop the safety plan?
I want to talk about school safety plans. I understand that there are quite a few people who have been assigned to speak about school safety plans coming up. So I'm hoping that someone will address the issue of active shooter plans. I don't know that there are any in this district or that there have been, let alone any drills on them. And I know that in the agenda, there's a reference to a site that was created by Homeland Security as a recommendation for schools across the nation to abide by those particular suggestions for active shooter safety plans. And when I looked at it, I was surprised because there, I believe there are no plans in this district. And I understand that in April, there will be drills or some sort of plan coming up in April of this year. This recommendation was actually written in 2008, and we're just now getting around next month at dealing with active shooter safety plans in this district. I have a question, and I hope somebody here who's going to speak about it will address that. Thank you. Thank you. Debbie La Boy.
Good evening, board president Farrell, board members, superintendent Dr. Haley, district officers, and audience members. My name is Debbie La Boy, and I'm a parent in the district where my son attends Ranch at Katari High School. There are many pieces to the puzzle of how to find solutions about school shootings. But the main piece I continue to hear over and over again that is dominating the conversation is about guns, and we need to add other pieces to this conversation. One of the pieces of the puzzle I recently found in a letter to the editor in the Press Democrat, which I agree with, and I would like to hear our society add this piece to the conversation. Oraleen Curla, a San Rosar resident, shared these words. "The solution to preventing mass killings, whether done by guns or any other weapons, such as trucks, cars, knives, axes, machetes, isn't to have more controls over these weapons. It is people who turn these items into weapons. It is people who need controls to teach them to be responsible citizens and have self-restraints. Such people control laws already exist and have existed for centuries. They are called morals, and they teach an inner code of conduct for self-governing. Examples are the Ten Commandments and the Golden Rule, which is due unto others as you would have them do unto you. California teachers are supposed to be teaching morals according to Education Code Section 233.5 A&amp;D. The code updated in 2016 reads, "Each teacher shall endeavor to impress upon the minds of the pupils the principles of morality, truth, justice, patriotism, and a true comprehension of the rights, duties, and dignity of American citizenship." Part B tells us why, in order to prevent acts of hate violence. With moral teachings, young people and adults can develop their own inner controls and can be self-governing as our family fathers intended us to be. Then we don't need a powerful police state to run our lives. We can remain a free people and a free nation, unquote." Thank you.
Thank you. Item A, A, let's go update the planning.
So some of these are carryovers from last month. What we did have in the package are 2017, 15 first-hand report certification. The next item, we really need some direction from the school board on. Prior to 2011, 12, the school year, the board declared 20-plus or minus acres on Kesar Avenue surplus and listed it for sale. The board subsequently had a listing agreement and then a contract for sale. The contract included contingencies that eventually were not maxed, so the district retained ownership. Board has no listing agreement with any broker to sell the property at this time. Superintendent is seeking direction from the board on options. There's another one, I'm hoping to hear it. A, remove the property from surplus and take it off the market. B, keep the property as surplus and entertain offers. Or C, keep the property as surplus and retain the services of the broker who could have it marketed.
Haley, have we heard from anybody who wants to buy the property?
We, we've been approached by several potential buyers. One of which I would say was relatively serious, and one was probably didn't realize what the expenses involved would be. One of the potential buyers was a signature home, so I'm.
City Ventures has come back as well. City Ventures has come back around as well.
Really, some direction.
What's the benefit of keeping it as a surplus?
We, we could, you know, when we look at land and property, we need to look far into the future, you know, not just three or four years, but five, ten, or maybe even 20 years. So if you recall, when we last revisited this topic, we requested, there's additional land as well. So the addition, Lawrence Jones going from the west to the east, it's a rather substantial piece of property. There's a little car battle on Kesar Avenue that we don't own, known as the G Properties. But then where the community garden is and continuing down Kesar, that is our property. The community garden's on the front. So we looked at if we needed to build another elementary school, would there be enough land for us to build another elementary school when we actually had a conceptual design, even with the sale of the 20 acres? So that's, that's intact. If we needed to expand Lawrence Jones? If we needed to expand Lawrence Jones, given at this point that we really don't have anywhere else we can locate another middle school, that need was, you know, for one, far in the future, around the demand. But we could substantially increase the capacity of Lawrence Jones. We can increase the capacity here at Tech Middle. There's not as much land, it would require multi-story buildings. So, you know, retaining the land gives us the option for another type of school property or another type of program. Be a school farm, it could be many different things at some point in the future to support the school district. There was, I think, some thinking that dislisting originally created my tenure superintendent, so I think it came about, to some extent, during the depths of the big recession, and it was looked at as a potential source of bridge funding, which we're not in that situation at the moment. I don't think that's good.
Does the state, the state used to have restrictions on money to come into us if we had excess property. How's that working? Is that, was there something where...
We, one of the reasons that we have a community garden there is to satisfy the state.
Okay.
But we're not incurring a penalty, we're currently have empty school site rather than land.
Okay. Remember, there's something that might preclude us from getting funds if we had excess property. So do the garden, do that. So, questions for channeling. Last time this was a contract, the City Ventures, I think, the price tag was $15,000. I would imagine that the price has gone up, but is there still market for approximately 100 houses that they wanted to build when they had it?
They wanted to add more, that's why we negotiated some increase in acres. I think they wanted to get up to 120 acres.
So I guess my question is...
The value there for more?
Well, I mean, I'm assuming that the properties were more than when we were in contract. I don't know that we need to sell it at this point, but, I mean, if the market's good today, I mean, you have a perception of what the market might look like tomorrow.
I think we're good for the next couple of years. I don't know that something that... I'm, the market's good right now, it's going to be the same for the next couple of years. I'll see if it goes down. All properties are in a very high demand. It's just driving the prices up, not as fast as they were. I think for our future though, it gives us peace of mind if we need it down the road. Is there...
You're saying he's a...
I would, I would agree.
Because we were gonna let keep 13 acres, is that right? Is that the...
No, we would still have, you know...
I mean, not handing it behind.
We walked it at one point. There's still a significant amount of land even beyond the fence where the grass isn't. Lawrence Jones, it wasn't part of the set.
You know, it seems logical to me that there's no reason to hire somebody to sell property. I mean, if someone came and said, "I'll buy it for $15 million," would you...
That might be different.
Yeah. But you see what I'm saying?
Right. So that would be...
So I would just leave it stat.
Yeah, exactly.
So that would be more of the B choice, keep the property at...
Get a plus and everything on for that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Once the property's gone, property's gone.
Can't sell quarters.
Yeah, but I mean, if someone came in with some unbelievable deal, you wouldn't want to...
But someone's not going to...
You'd want to listen, you'd want to know.
Me.
Last item.
Yeah, I kind of announced the talk of Brookfield Homes, which I was sitting with Saturday night. Said, "Hey." And I don't think they like the idea of the competition right now, because they like to have the, you know, the own markets that's developing basically the streets to give to builders and stuff, so. Not in their initial scope or else, the person that I... By the time I got to there, very little later, talking, I did, you know...
Enjoy the evening.
Enjoy the evening is another way of saying, so. But, I mean, there's a couple of their neighborhoods going right now, right? So, I mean...
Everything's going to be good, and sound new very quickly.
Yeah, I would just leave it stat. Two cents. I'm okay with that.
And... Another comment? Okay.
Okay, so we'll stick with B, and if we have firm offers, we'll let the board know.
Thank you.
Item 3, the district is working around our current tenant, Modernized Facility on Bat Avenue. Actually, several representatives of Bergen University for county studies, growing the education foundation of that, are very appreciative of us housing them the last five years, six years, five years, and giving them time to get their new location ready for them. We've been working around them. I think it might be worth a special field trip at some point, if you'd like to see the work that we've done over there fixing it up. It looks different than it did. So right now, we're mainly working with Sonoma County Office of Education to house transition age students there. They're very excited about that location. They've always wanted that. When I say transition age, these are generally 18 to 22-year-old students who can continue to receive special education services, things about transportation, working community, so it's great education for that, public transit, employment opportunities, restaurants, different things. And then just in terms of direction, we were approached by someone who was interested in developing perhaps some housing for former foster youth, which is a real need, we're familiar with the say. Often foster youth, when they turn 18, their options for life are pretty limited. I can certainly think, when I was 18, if I didn't have parental and family support, it would've been pretty hard on me. So if they don't have a firm offer to be made, but I guess it would be something along the lines of a lease that, for part of the land that's there that's not being used, for them to build something that would house exiting that foster. And again, the location would be ideal, because there's, again, employment opportunities, public transit, different shopping, lots of things with...
So this might be like four plexes that they have long-term leases on, that they would build to soothe their...
Right, so the lease would need to be long enough that it would justify going to donors to build a facility. We're not proposing to use any of the current school buildings that are there that we're rehabbing. We intend to use those for our own programs, Sonoma County Office of Education, and Sonoma County Special Education, local plan area. But additional land between, you know, the envision of where those buildings were and KRCB that right now is...
And they wouldn't, we wouldn't do any of the building, we'd just leave the land.
Correct. Well, I mean, this was very preliminary. The question was really posed, if this is something that the board would entertain if they had that opportunity, if donors were lined up, would be interested in a conversation? If the answer is, "We're not even interested in a conversation," then they would drop it in the bag.
I'm interested in a conversation.
I do think it's need.
Yeah. The crushers haven't come back to try to move the stadium?
That's, well, I think that that's...
That's a...
They're making the road from...
Not yet, but you're marketing to...
No, I think that's...
Your apartment.
We need the stadium back.
That was the old downtown. Okay.
Next item, code of the future, as you saw with the iPad 1-to-1 presentation, very excited about the use of technology here. We were slated under current contract to have a mid-year start for Technology Middle School with regards to code of the future, and speaking with the principal and staff, logistically would probably be better for them to start in August rather than mid-year. So we reached out to code of the future to look at the contract. They have, we've discussed it, they haven't gotten back to us with a new one, because they're actually rethinking how they're providing their middle school coaching and looking for a way to actually make it less expensive, and that there's not as high a need for the implementation that they have at the elementary level. So when we have that contract, we'll break that.
Be funded through the casino funds also?
We still have the initial funding from the Federated Indians, and we anticipate having that be part of our proposal on the... Parcel tax update, you have that in your board packet. We did have a parcel tax committee meeting, so they have an opportunity to go over this document. We'll hold our bond funding update for the special meeting later this month. Development update, if you've driven down expressway, you see they're continuing to move pretty fast in terms of building homes. Sat in on a presentation done by the city with regards to the university district and all the general plan areas. They, the developer, Brookfield, whether they do it themselves or for Selig to Mel developer, do intend to move onto the Keizer Avenue side of the university district and build homes over there. There will be some larger lot homes, it's changed a little bit from their initial mapping. One area, I met with a community member who was concerned about whether or not we could house all the students, and I said that with the current general plan areas that the city has provided us, yes. She was also concerned that we didn't know necessarily that the area that's been emptied out on the south side of the expressway between there and Sonoma State, the giant hole in the ground, that is to be filled in, just a reminder, have either houses or condominiums on top of it.
That's not part of the university, that'd be like part of the...
It is, no, it's part of the university, part of the university district.
Not East Sonoma.
Not part of Sonoma State. I did say, you know, if at some point the northeast plan area was to be developed, that would pose a problem for the school district. That's the land north of Keizer Avenue for two reasons. Number one, it's not in our district for the most part, and secondly, it would require moving housing for elementary schools, which we already, we have what we have for high school and middle school, we would have to expand, but...
Depending on if it's that senior town.
Yeah, well, correct, that's the most downtown, but, you know, we don't have, at this point in time, schools set aside for that with the reopening of University Elementary in Rich and Crane. For the current building underway, we believe we have capacity. But if that occurred, then we'd have to revisit that. That's why we knew we had the property set aside for an elementary school if needed on the...
And the huge, the rooms, all the developer fees don't go to us. That's what we changed the boundary.
That is, that is a, that's, it's even, it's a problem, because we really should've had a litigation agreement for university district, but it's just the way that things worked out. But what we have said, and we've communicated it to the city, you know, to any potential developers on the north side of Keizer, that we would want, you know, all of the developers to sign a document that they understand that those properties are not occupied or are part of school district factories, and that if people were to build and occupy those homes, that they would have to pay some kind of fee to a wall in our schools.
Or we'd have, or we'd have last go on the school district.
Well, that would be, that would be the best, the best case scenario, like we did in 2005, when you get, it's actually the county committee on school district to, I don't know whatever this...
School district or...
Reorganization to...
I mean, that just makes common sense.
Yeah.
It's agreed from other districts. They've involved... You know, there was some question as to whether or not the infrastructure was sufficient to go north of Keizer. I don't know the answer to that, what, that question or not. I know that...
Active shooter.
Yeah, because I know it, right now it stops right ahead of our property, but pretty easy to get to our property, but then after that, I mean, you know, the best thing that would happen, I mean, you still have houses that are in the way before you get to that open land, unless they're bought out. I mean, those guys are all on wells, right?
I would guess that they are. Some of those houses are pretty close to street, but they might be connected, but...
I mean, Keizer was always a county road, they'd sell it on the, on Keizer, and then they have the, whatever, the water well that it sold Arrowhead or whoever else, Frank Myers, Snyder's, so I would assume all that well, waters.
Yeah, Road Park water that goes to Calistoga.
Yeah, they do to get back. Yeah, which is crazy, isn't it? Anyway. Another thing, just a size, that Keizer is going to be fully rezoned, I think up here too.
That's the biggest ticket item with regards to entertaining an offer upon the property that's been on Keizer, but it's always been the hang-up, what is the cost of property in Keizer Avenue?
I was gonna ask if I, I guess, from Brookfield City. I have a question. I noticed over at Burton Center that the city's taken out all the Ivy adjacent to...
Wherever's putting it, Keizer.
Is that what it is? Okay, because I know we, the district on the other side, so just wondering if we were gonna do anything with that.
Take a look at that, which, which, which side of the Ivy?
The other side.
Oh, okay. Most of the Ivy on the tech middle school side is ours.
Yeah, yeah, that's not the Ivy.
I was just wondering if there was some other way out of case of...
Facilities update, we, we've had some recent tours, we took the school board and we took the facilities, the bond oversight committee, I'm tours of the Ranch High School Theater and that amazing building. We've met with superintendents several times, everything left track and is on time, so that's good. And again, the one for board is included in the package.
Right, item 8B, those second.
So one of the sections that we have on our website, I apologize, I put in a lisp because I had a little bit of a circle. We've, we've been doing some work on it and updating it. We have this opening page, the talks about school safety. We're gonna probably after this meeting do some more editing, because I think there's Rightfully so, people are concerned, but I think there's perhaps been some incomplete information regarding school safety plans and some different things. We have information on school safety plans. We have the underlying education code here, so anybody can read it for themselves. Below that, we have the safety plans for each school. One of the things that we hear a lot about is this March 1st date. The March 1st date, and anyone again can read that code section for themselves, has to do with the school site level review, and annually they are forwarded to the district. I really want to highlight Education Code 32281, because I think it's important, and this is one of the things that we want to make highlighted, so rather than having people go into code and read it, we just kind of make it easier for them. Here we go. Now we're saying subdivision B, a school district, county office of education may, in consultation with law enforcement officials, elect not to have a school site council develop and write those portions of its comprehensive safety plan that include tactical responses to criminal incidents that may result in death or serious bodily injury at the school site. The portions of the school safety plan that include tactical responses to criminal incidents may be developed by administrators of the school district or county office of education in consultation with law enforcement officials and with representatives of an exclusive bargaining unit of employees of that school district or county office of education, if he or she chooses to participate. The school district or county office of education may elect not to disclose those portions of the comprehensive school safety plan that include tactical responses to criminal incidents. As used in this article, tactical responses to criminal incidents means steps taken to safeguard pupils and staff to secure the effective school premises and apprehend the criminal perpetrator or perpetrators. So, again, we've heard a lot about school plans and what should be available and what should not be available. This has been a major topic of discussion as time has gone on regarding various school incidents. Most recently directly involving us was last year with the multiple bond threats that we had at Ranch High School, and debriefing with law enforcement about that, the emphasis on keeping the self-confidential information with regards to our physical plan, our responses, how we would communicate, because having that information out of the community just gives an opportunity... gives an opportunity for someone who's gonna pose a threat to have access to our information. And so that is how we have proceeded, and that is why all of the information is posted online or made available to members of the public. So with that, I invited Amy Carter, principal of Rancho High School, to block the board through her perspective as a site principal on the development of the safety plan and how it's implemented at Rancho High School, and then she is also going to call on some colleagues and teachers to give their perspective.
Thank you, Dr. Haley. I think before I begin, I really wanna go on record with the note, with the pink flamingos thing. Can I just, I'm really thinking that...
Are they flash shit or are they real? Can they live in this place?
I'm not sure. Whatever, he was just playing paint.
I just feel like I keep it honest on this. I'm really happy to see this agenda item come up, and it's really comforting to me to see so many people involved and proactive about really making sure that we're talking about student safety, and, you know, I really look forward to partnering with each one of you on this topic, and my office is always open to, to, you know, answer questions or get feedback, and I hope to be able to answer some of your questions tonight. So A B, one-eight-seven dictates that schools have to have comprehensive school safety plans. This is a massive binder that covers a wide range of safety topics, but it's largely our tactical response binder. It outlines for us what our response should be in things like earthquake response, active shooter, lockdown drills, floods, hostage situations, and there's actually a chapter on that, suicides, mass casualties, but it's really an extensive binder that we spend and review each year and we refer to regularly throughout the school year. We've had this plan since the law was enacted, and I can report that for the last five years as an administrator in this district, I've been expected to surrender my plan to the district where it's evaluated, I get feedback notes, which I then incorporate for next year's review. Along with the comprehensive school safety plan that each school site has, we are also expected to write our annual school safety plan, and Dr. Haley's kinda showed you where that is on the school website. This is really kind of a subset of the comprehensive safety plan, and it requires us to update our safety data, to look at what's taking place at the school, and talk through that, and to set two annual goals for our, in two areas. The first is an engagement, violence, victimization, and substance abuse, and every school writes a goal in that area. And the other is a safe and orderly environment, and again, we submit goals, and all the schools' goals are available online to take a look at. This is an open-to-the-public document that you'll find on our website, and which is updated every year, and our school site council, which involves parents, students, teachers, administrators, and when we can, representatives from law enforcement reviews this document and has the opportunity to ask questions and give feedback. Ms. LaBoye was a part of our team, and, and this year, our students had great questions this year, and our students really showed high levels of involvement in the process, which was really rewarding for me as an educator to see. Some examples of the staff training that takes place in any given school year, we have a standing agenda item, we don't have a meeting without touching on the topic of safety, it's every time we gather as a staff, and every time my administrative team together, we meet every week, and the number two item on our agenda is safety. But some of the staff trainings we've done, we talk about bullying, we talk about suicide prevention training, we have the cave specialists come out and walk us through that, we talk about digital citizenship, disaster response training, we recently had Resi come and talk to our team about what their responsibilities are in a mass disaster and where they need to be deployed and what their role is in that. As part of our first two days curriculum, we make sure that all the students go through all the drills that we have at school, Ms. Gardena walks them through every drill, we walk them through that, it's part of our first two days of school training that every student receives. This year, well, every year, we hold our shake, roll, drill, our earthquake drill, it's a lot of fun, and, you know, this year, we, we did have the opportunity to have our, every fifteen minutes, and really simulate for the students the consequences of, you know, driving drunk or high, and, you know, it was a real special collaboration with law enforcement that I think we're all grateful for. This school year, for our very first fire drill, we had the fire chief from the Roderick Park Police Department on hand to sort of watch our exit, particularly with the construction taking place at our site, and he gave us some pointers and some things that we could modify and improve on, and we incorporated that into our drill. At the, at the time that he came, we, we mentioned that we also do our shooter drill in the spring, and he's gonna come to our shooter drill that we do in the spring and also kind of watch, watch the campus and give us some recommendations so that we're continually improving, and that was planned for the spring when the weather's a little warmer. Members of our staff have attended all kinds of training, to exhaustive delists, but most notably, we've done risk assessment training at SCO.
Can you highlight, I don't know if you're, how to highlight your, the relationship you have with our, Roderick Park Public Safety coming on the campus to practice?
Yes, yeah, that's something that probably our students might not even know, is that every summer, the Roderick Park Police Department comes to our campus and they do an active shooter drill. It's really fascinating to watch how quickly and immediately they address a threat, they will simulate injuries, they'll simulate a shooter, and they'll penetrate the campus as quickly as possible and then debrief with us. They've kinda told us our responsibility is to get children out of the way, and they run very quickly, very aggressively towards the situation, but they, they rehearse those scenarios, they do that when children are on the campus so that we don't, you know, have anyone upset or alert, alarm people about what's taking place, but every summer we see extensive drills from the police force on our campus. So my staff members have attended the risk assessment training at SCO, and any teacher that volunteers is welcome to join for that training, and that's where you're given sort of a rubric to assess threats and, and the appropriate response. And members of our team are also signed up for active shooter protocols, there are some that are coming up in Marin and Windsor and Pleasanton, and many members of our team are taking advantage of that opportunity. Rancho High School, we used our comprehensive safety plan, as Dr. Haley mentioned, in the bomb threat, and we received a lot of praise from parents and law enforcement for our disciplined and orderly response, and we used our plan again recently in the wildfires. During the crisis, we had our plan ready to potentially become a crisis response center, because we are, you know, a government institution, and so we had gotten out of plans and we were prepared to utilize the sort of expectations there to move forward with that. One of the best benefits, I think, for our team was really utilizing the emergency phone tree. Within seconds, we knew if our staff, members of the staff were okay, who was affected, and how we could help, and we continued that communication throughout that difficult time. Our philosophy is really to train and drill. After every drill or event, my leadership team and campus monitors, we gather and we talk through what went well, where can we improve, and we use that reflection to improve our plans. Teachers will do the same thing, they'll talk to the kids, get their feedback, or notice things they've seen, and send us emails suggesting things that we can do better next time. And, you know, we use this reflection to learn, to modify, enhance our existing plan, and to ensure that our schools are as safe as they can possibly be. You know, just as a, on a personal note, as, as an educator and administrator and a mother of five, I can't, nothing is more important to me than the safety of the children that are in my care throughout the school day, and, you know, it's, it's a number one priority for me as a human being and in my profession. I'd like to now kind of turn some time over to my colleague, Ms. Gardena. Ms. Gardena is really our safety specialist at Rancho High School. She's the assistant principal who updates our safety plans and ensures that our protocols are drilled. You can bring your binders too. It would be hard, it would be hard for us to find another administrator in Sonoma who is more trained or has more expertise in safety than Ms. Gardena does. She takes advantage of every opportunity to expand her knowledge, and she participates in the Roderick Park Safety Committee as a liaison with law enforcement, and it's really her hunger for knowledge and skill with safety that led Ms. Gardena to bring us the trauma-informed school practices four years ago, which recently were discussed on Sixty Minutes with Oprah. So we're, that was really attributed to Ms. Gardena's proactive work. And in my time with Ms. Gardena, I've seen Ms. Gardena administer CPR after a nine-one-one operator told her to commence resuscitation on a student who's pulsing stop. I've seen her cradle-fried students in her arms, distracting with dialogue the fact that his kneecap was not in the right place due to his falling on a skateboard. She has taken endless rides in ambulances to hospitals with children who have suffered serious illness or injury, just so these students were not alone. She acts swiftly, decisively, with courage and knowledge in every situation that Rancho has been confronted with, and in fact, Ms. Gardena is the administrator who locked down our school campus when there was some question about an individual in an inappropriate Halloween costume at the SSU campus. And for the last five years, her own children have been on our campus and under her care, making this person's safety even more meaningful. As a mother of five daughters, it's my sincere wish that if any one of my children ever suffers an injury, that a woman like Ms. Gardena is there by their side.
Okay, how do I follow that? Thank you. So again, I'm just here to, you know, as a veteran admin in the district, I've been honored to work for the district, it's been my pleasure, but I am here to tell you, since nineteen ninety-nine, as my first year in the district as an admin, we did practice drills and put in a lockdown. We actually had a lockdown at Creekside when we had a possible gunman on Kizer Road, and I was there, pregnant with my now sophomore, Rancho, and we had to do lockdown very quickly, actually lockdown for a couple hours, but everybody was safe and went through that process. So since nineteen ninety-nine, my first year as an admin in this district, I've taken my job very seriously, and my number one goal every day is to provide a safe campus for all our students, and that truly is my number one job. Sure, there are other things I do, but providing a safe campus is my true number one job. I bless myself being in the community, we have great resources, I'm also married to a police officer, yes, so, so I have his resources continually, but I pride myself on making relationships with our community members and with our police officers, enough that I have their private cell phones and I can call them, and Angie needs help, so, and I pride myself on, again, building with our community and with everybody out there. That kind of leads to where I feel, the number one safety thing, and preventative, I've been to lockdown training right after combine, I went to that one, I've been to almost every year, updated lockdown training. It's changed, if you, those of you been around, it used to be lockdown, 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 right? And that's what it was when we were at Creekside. Now it's run high-fight, and, like, for example, and we learn from everything. When we had that call from Sonoma State and it was on Halloween, and we got the nixle, Angie, there was a possible gunman at Sonoma State, it was lunchtime, okay? So I'd make a quick decision, right? So the quick decision was, get our kids, those are there, they're locked down, those kids that aren't there obviously stay off campus. Luckily, within two minutes, Sonoma State had found out it was a Halloween costume and it was not real, and they called us and our kids were safe. But I will tell you, I was very proud of our staff at that time, it was lunchtime, but they were out there getting kids in that view, or they were getting kids, you know, they were doing what they needed to do, being lunchtime. Our kids were respectful, our kids worked with everybody, very proud of the situation. With fire drills now, due to recent events, when there was a cold fire alarm, we're not exiting, if we know it's not fire. So because of what's happened, so we have to tweak our safety plans and our exit routes based on what happens. Our bomb threats last year, very proud of our staff and students. I've gotten multiple comments from our public safety, from even parents, from kids, that they were calm, they understood our respect, we searched the campus, it was just a very, very proud moment I had of our students and staff at Rancho, and the district and the community. So, and again, I pride myself on those relationships with kids. The number one statistic says, if kids are connected to school or they're connected to an adult on campus, they're less likely to do anything to harm anyone on that campus or to harm themselves. So we do a thing at Rancho every year, where I send out a list of our students, and everybody highlights who they're connected with. I get the list back, we go through it, anybody left, we make sure they have a connection. We divide up with the staff and say, we need to reach out to this kid, just because every kid needs to have that connection. And I pride myself on that, you'll find a lot of kids, you know, screaming, saying, "Good morning to me, is she crazy?", you know? I just, I always, always walk by kids, especially if they're alone, I mean, all staff does at Rancho, but, yeah, that's something that I try to do every day. So we have been submitting plans since nineteen ninety-nine, I can speak, since I've been an admin in this district, and we've always practiced lockdowns and fire drills and everything that we need to do. But I think we have a wonderful community, and as we work together, I believe we're doing the very best thing to provide a very safe campus for our kids. And I'd just like to kind of end with something that I've pulled very strongly, and that is, you know, when it comes to safety, we have to be better prepared to react, obviously, sometimes, so that's where the awareness comes from, and then I believe that prevention is building that positive climate, setting policies and rules, educating students, teachers, staff, and families, stop an incident before we see it happening, and support the students that are impacted if something does happen. The fire is an example. A lot of our kids are still grieving, they're going through the process, so, and then obviously the response that we have to have. And then something else I just put together is that safety does not only include drills and evacuation procedures, but includes the people and programs at a school site. In fact, other than natural disasters, the more we addressing the individual needs of the school community, the safer our campuses will be. It's not about how fast we do a fire drill, but how every student on campus has one caring individual, and we work really hard to do all that, in this district totally. So, very proud to be here, got one graduating, one sophomore and one coming up, I'm very honored to work for this district, I'm very proud of what we do, so, thank you, that's just my background, and anybody's ever welcome to come to my office and see my nice big three binders of everything I put together, but I will tell you, most of it's about...
Well, in the confidential...
Yes, I know, but that's, I'm there. But, but again, it's mostly about, you see, and other caring programs or resources, or Cade or Doc, or, you know, how do we help our kids feel good about being at Rancho? Thank you.
To offer an elementary principal's perspective, I've got Jen Hanson.
Good evening, my name is Jen Hanson, and I'm the principal at Evergreen Elementary. I felt it was important to address the board and the public, and speak on behalf of myself and the other principals in this district and my staff. Last Friday morning, nearly every school site in the district was visited by various members of the community. They approached our office staff and demanded that they be provided with copies of our comprehensive school safety plans. All principals and office staff provided copies of the plan to these individuals, although each plan, as we've seen, is readily available on the district website for immediate download. Later, a community member posted a lengthy public service announcement on a Facebook page stating that none of the schools except for one were able to produce a plan, which is untrue. This calculated effort by certain community members felt like intimidation and harassment towards office staff and site principals, as all of the information that is required by the state is posted on our district website. It's important for everyone to understand the difference between a comprehensive school safety plan and a tactical emergency response plan. There are two distinct plans with two distinct purposes. The comprehensive school safety plan includes information about how we keep students safe on a daily basis. For example, our plan includes information about restorative practices, attendance, calling CPS if necessary, and maintaining our physical environment. My school's comprehensive school safety plan was reviewed and approved by my school site council on October twenty-third, twenty-seventeen. The emergency response plan includes confidential information about how staff will respond in case of an active shooter, earthquake, or fire. Our emergency response plan has been developed in conjunction with site leadership and with staff members, working together to include everyone's best ideas on how to keep our kids safe. Our comprehensive school safety plans meet the requirements for the California Department of Education and are specifically not lengthy due to the confidential nature of many of our safety procedures. If my school were to be the target of an active shooter, why would I want to clearly post my emergency response plan for anyone to see? post my emergency response plan for anyone to see? The individuals that are privy to this information are my staff members, not the general public. As a site principal and as a parent in this district, I find that these statements that are posted online that discount our school's plans and deem them to be insufficient to be offensive. I have worked extensively with parents and staff over the past year and a half to refine our emergency response plan at Evergreen. On January 26, 2017, my approximately 60 staff members and all 550 students participated in a full-scale earthquake evacuation drill, which included search and rescue, first aid, and the successful student release of nearly 100 TK and kindergarteners. If we did not have an emergency response plan, how would those efforts have been coordinated? Another drill was scheduled for October 2017, however, my staff and I felt holding a drill of this scale and nature would be inappropriate, as we had just experienced the Sonoma County wildfires the week before. Since October, our staff has continued to refine our emergency response plan while being sensitive to the trauma experienced by students and staff due to wildfires. We have rescheduled this full-scale earthquake evacuation drill for April 2018, and the River Park Public Service representatives will be in attendance to critique our plan and offer feedback on how we can improve. I find that the lack of confidence in our district leadership, site leadership, teachers, and classified staff members in regards to safety to be insulting. The safety of our students is our number-one priority. We have devoted countless staff meetings to the topic of safety at both the district and the site level. While we cannot predict if or when a disaster or dangerous situation may occur, I have 100% complete confidence in my staff that they would act in the best interest and the safety of all of our students. To suggest that the plans my staff and I have created are not responsive to the needs of our most precious commodity, our children, is a disgrace. Thank you for your time. I'd like to introduce my teacher named Nancy Iona.
My name is Nancy Iona. I live at 539 León Court South in River Park. I've been a teacher in the Catatua River Park School District for almost 35 years. This week, after I read a very negative report about our district's safety plan or lack of on social media, I felt I needed to reach out to our school board and our community with the teacher's point of view. As I previously stated, I've been around for 35 years. I was teaching at Goldridge in 1989, and Salsito drove past our school, my first lockdown. We had no plan. I was also a teacher in charge at Goldridge when a possible shooter was seen on Snyder. It was lunchtime, and I heard 200 kids in the MU and locked it down. We had no plan. Today, 2018, I can clearly and honestly state that I have never felt more prepared, equipped, or supported as I take on the role of protector of my students. Evergreen now has that plan. I believe safety is a fluid experience, evolving after each disaster and each tragedy. At Evergreen, we recently have cut out exiting our rooms during every fire drill, a lesson sadly learned from another tragedy. We all carry our walkie-talkies wherever we go. We're in constant contact with the office, our admins, and our colleagues. Today, in my second-grade class, we had a restorative circle. Every one of my students said they felt safe to be at school. That's gigantic. We're doing a great job, and that needs to be heard, that needs to be celebrated, and that's what should be shared on social media. Thank you for your time.
My name is Rachel Gretsch. I'm the principal at Conwell Elementary School. I also wanted to address safety. I'm into education because I love kids. I love working with them, and I love working with their families. Part of what you talked about was, you know, spend time with the kids, be the person in the front. And if you were to walk into a classroom with me, the kids that said, "Ms. Gretsch", those are the biggest problems. Those are the kids who are in my office all the time. But they know me because I check in with them at recess, I check in with them at lunch. I check in and ask, "Hey, bud, how's your day going?" "I made it to recess, I'm doing good." "Great, keep it up." I've always thought about student safety. Maybe it's because I'm from a generation where, as an elementary student, I was in a lockdown. I was in middle school during Columbine. It's part of education for me, it's part of school. So I've always thought about what I would do in the event of an emergency to keep kids safe. As a principal, I do the same, only now I have to think about how I would communicate with my staff, the district, law enforcement, and parents. I grew up in this community, my daughter's a student in this district, and I know many of our students and families through school and sports. This is my community, and I'm willing to do everything I can to ensure our students are safe. I understand that student safety is on all our minds. What's been occurring across our country is gut-wrenching. I'm working with staff, the district, and with Rock Park Police Department to ensure that we're well-prepared. Tomorrow, Rock Park Police Department will be at Con Elementary eating lunch with our students, because I want our students to build that relationship with them. Everything that is required for me to share about school safety, our school safety plan is online. I'm not open to sharing every last detail of our site's tactical response plans. I will not be sharing where we plan on evacuating to, how we lock down, or how we share various roles within staff, and what we would play if given an emergency. That would be like giving you my password, and in fact, would make my students less safe. I will assure you that I take safety very serious, and that this last Friday morning, when someone came into the office and asked for the safety plan, I was in the midst of making sure I had every i dotted and every t crossed for a safety drill that we had scheduled for later that morning. I was in a classroom checking in with a teacher who has a student with special needs, making sure that his visual schedule was up to date and that she had an icon saying that there was a drill, because this student worries when there's changes. And then went on to other classrooms and checked in with teachers and students to make sure that we were fully prepared and confident. I've included my office staff, my custodian, everybody at my school site in our plans. My door is always open. We will continue to have different types of drills, and we will continue to plan as a staff to address our highest priority, student safety. Thank you. I'd like to introduce to you my teacher in charge, Sean Carter.
Good evening. There have been some members of our community that have made some assumptions about safety, that it's not a priority in our district. So I wanted to share my point of view as a teacher, 30 years in this district. District staff, administration, and teachers have all worked very hard on our safety drills in response to the fires and recent events in Florida. In fact, just today, our principals, Rachel Gretsch and Asher Chapman, met with the staff very passionately and informed us of their meeting with public safety. We went into great detail and talked about what we would do in various situations, including an active shooter situation. We would never betray our students by handing out their home addresses and phone numbers. The same is true when it comes to our safety drills and procedures. We are all on alert. Fear looms in the air as heavy as October smoke due to the horrific events in Florida. In response to that, we revised our plans, we discussed what to do as a staff, we have practiced new safety drills, and we are preparing ourselves and our students the best we can. Ask yourself, has anyone ever stated that safety was not a concern? We all work towards the same goal and an environment where our children feel safe, accepted, loved, and that's our top priority. The fear in some select community members that we have not acted is simply not true. The fact that we refuse to give out information supports this. We must be rational in our thoughts and actions and not let fear lead our lives. I don't know a single teacher who wouldn't stand in front of their students to keep them safe. So I want to emphasize to our community that we are laser-focused on the safety of our children. Thank you.
Can I bring our middle-school perspective? We have Ms. Gretsch.
Good evening, once again. It is important for the public and the board to understand the sincerity and the importance with which we view and take action upon safety measures. In our district, at our sites, and in our leadership meetings, we address these concerns with careful consideration of multiple resources, including our local public safety advisors. We make plans for the unplanned events like those rocking the nation. We continue to actively revise, rethink, and revisit our safety protocols. We too have been struck with emotions of disbelief, fear, and helplessness as we watch news headlines concerning school shootings. We too, teachers, administrators, office, and support staff, will do everything in our power to ensure the safety of our students, our children. It is ignorant and audacious to imply that this is not a deep and sincere concern of all educators in our district. We too, our mothers, fathers, grandparents, sons, daughters, husbands, and wives. I imagine that this reaction and response comes from the fear we all wake up with at this time in our nation's history. Rather than reacting with negativity and divisiveness, it is important that we act as a community to ensure the safety of our children. Please do not, for a single moment, question our commitment to the safety of our students, nor overlook the responsibility of the community at large to provide and maintain confidence in our institutions to bear this enormous responsibility. Our students are our children. We are committed to be prepared for an event that puts our lives at risk, and it is with great seriousness that we take these concerns and turn them into viable plans. Thank you.
I think to just conclude, while, you know, I definitely appreciate community involvement and discussion and concern around the topic of safety during these challenging headlines and times, I think this evening we've made it clear that making unfounded statements about our safety plans is a tack on some of the finest teachers and administrators around. And if any of you had stood beside me during the bomb threat or during the fires, you would know that not only does our comprehensive school safety plan work, it arrives. And this is because of the heroic and vigilant men and women in our district who have trained and chosen to dedicate their intellect, their time, and their lives to the fostering, nurturing, and protection of students in our care. Thank you.
Principal Carter, could I ask you a question? Would President Farrell be interested to come back to the podium or not?
No, I think her update was efficient.
So, as trustees, we're not allowed to ask any questions about school safety?
We can have a discussion in the board, but she did her presentation.
We have more to cover.
Oh, that's more?
Yeah, so the next area we wanted to talk about in our package is the additional safety documents. I think we've covered that, although we are going to rename them and adjust the website to make clear what is considered active and what's not. We had a meeting, and I'll touch on it again in a moment, we've had many meetings, but we had most recently one with River Park Public Safety yesterday. We met for, actually, two hours and talked about a couple key topics, our changes in our protocol that you wrote a little bit about, and most importantly, communication. And so one of the things that I wanted to do is have Josh Savage give the board a demonstration in real time of one of our communication devices, and then talk a little bit about what we're doing with radios. So I need to release the word.
Josh Savage, Executive Director of City's Maintenance and Operations. So we've been working on updating our communication system district-wide. We currently have, a couple years ago, we did the IT project where we installed the Formcast clock speakers throughout the district. And part of that capability was so that we could display messages across the screen in case of an emergency. So when we first started, all we were able to do was we have a sidecar which connects through our telephones, and we had pre-intervent messages that you push the button and it would display across the screen. We've been working on expanding that capability. So now we're able to, we're finishing bedding out the process, but we're able to send a communication anywhere, anywhere across, throughout the district, and do it from our house anywhere. So the first thing that we did was we did a, I had staff audit throughout the district, our emergency communication radios. We had, and what we found was that at a couple sites, we weren't able to speak to staff as clearly as we liked. They'd have to leave the building, unable to talk, which is obviously unacceptable So in an emergency situation, we're able to communicate. So we did audit, and like I said, it wasn't working the way that we wanted to. So we worked with a local vendor to change out the repeater, which we had located on one of our sites, which boosts the signal. It was an analog repeater. So what he did was, he switched over to a digital repeater, and again, we've been testing out those communications, and so far, it's worked out fantastically. So we're going to move ahead with installing a digital repeater on one site, and to have redundancy, we're going to install a digital repeater on another site. So in case of emergency, if one goes down, we're able, the odds of both sites going down are slim, so that we can speak. We're also upgrading our radios to a digital radio so that we can communicate with key staff. We all, we have a district emergency channel right now, but what we want to do is make it so that each site has several of these radios that can communicate directly with the district. As opposed to before, everybody was able to switch to that emergency channel and speak to the district, which obviously in a situation, emergency situation, we don't want to have we don't want to have 300 teachers on the same channel. So we're working on getting that updated. Installation should be done over, at the end of, at the end of April, we should be able to change to that capability. Another thing that we're working on, as I was saying before, is being able to speak over the Formcast, our clock speakers. So I'm going to go ahead and give you guys a sample of what we're able to do. Emergency lockdown. There is active activity in the area. Please follow lockdown procedures and wait for the all-clear notification. Do you guys have your cellphones on with you?
You have the...
Yeah.
There is activity in the area. Please follow lockdown procedures and wait for the all-clear notification. Please respond with one of the following. Press one for IP help. Press three for inside building. Press four for outside building. To hear this message again, please press... So if you guys don't mind responding to that? So...
Is that showing you the response?
So it's showing in real time you guys responding to it. So then, I'd be able, we'd be able to view, so it shows, it's on top of it. There's two that say "I'm safe" in the building, three that say "I'm safe" in the building. So we'd be able to view who that is. It's going to show the recipients. So there's two that, "Do I need help?", so we'd be able to know who those are. It's myself, Dr. Haley. Someone come please rescue us.
So Josh, is this something, is there a command center controlling this? Or how does, who's responsible for this? Are you or Dr. Haley?
So we, every site principal is going to have the capability to do this. So it'll be broken down, we can break it down to individual clock speakers. We can break it down to individual classrooms, individual wings, individual sites. So every principal is going to have the capability to just finish in the final log zone.
Okay. So depending on the incident, the incident commander will be either principal or someone up out of the tree chain?
Correct, yeah.
We'll talk about that in a minute. That was part of our discussion yesterday with public safety.
So then, yeah, so I mean, once the, once the incident is over, we can send another notification that we're all cleared. You guys should get another call. The situation is under control. The all-clear notification hasn't been issued. Normal activities may be resumed. If you have any questions or concerns, please call the office.
So what are the things that each principal can do or district staff, different customized messages that are already done? So all you have to do is hit send. And we know we need to practice this sort of thing, so we're making arrangements for this. This system, when we migrate to our hopefully school messenger next year, which if you've heard of Remind, and many of our principals use Remind, does everything that Remind does, but more. And we want to see how the two combine. And also radios, there's some teachers already that have them. They're assigning them, they're comfortable using them. Well, if you don't have them, I'll just reply, so that's some further training we need to do as well. If you're more comfortable with something, learn to use it. Okay, thank you very much, Josh. The one other thing under communication I did want to emphasize is Nixle. We do not have our own Nixle account. We can have near-instantaneous access to Runtard Park's, and they do the account. So we can use Nixle through that, and we have private communication channels to do that. The next item I wanted to talk about, and you heard a little bit of it mentioned, safety protocols. We wanted to go over our protocols with Runtard Park Public Safety. It's acknowledged that we do interface with other safety agencies. Part of our district is in Incorporated, and so that would be located on the County Sheriff's Department. Part of our district is in the city of Katati, and so that would be the Katati Police Department. As we know, in Runtard Park, we have both police side and fireside of public safety. And then in other parts of our district, we also interface with Branchill Building Fire District. So we've met with all of those agencies. We don't do it all at once, but sometimes just for practicality purposes and making, making each other, we, we, our public safety, we'll get their perspective on both the fireside and the police side. So you mentioned incident commander. One of the things that they wanted to emphasize, and we're emphasizing to all of our principals, that either they or their designee is the person responsible of their cell. And if there's a threat or an event, and public safety responds, they're responding to you for that threat, not to say over command of that site. So for instance, when we did have the bomb threat at Manchester High School, it was very clear that Amy Carter was in charge. Once the bomb squad arrived, they were making a tactical decision about how to seek out the bomb. They were still working with her, and she was in charge of that school site. If there's a fire, you know, the fire department, be it Branchill Building or Runtard Park Public Safety, they're going to respond and put out the fire. They will have command of putting out that fire. But everything else going on at that school site will be under the command of the school principal or their designee. If there's a school shooting, they've made it very clear, they're only thinking of stopping the shooting. Everything else going on is going to be the responsibility of the school principal. They really wanted to emphasize that just because they arrive with a badge or a uniform, they're not taking over. It's our job, and so we need to have clear lines as well at each school site, who is going to take the command if someone, for whatever reason, is not there incapacitated. One of the things that we are now emphasizing, hopefully every staff person has heard it, is observe, think, and act. And the most important faculty that we have as human beings is our ability to think, to use judgment, and not just rope, practice, and memorize things to do. Oh, we always go out that door. We always go out that door. We always go to the field. Sadly, in this day and age, that can put you in harm's way. And so we can no longer think like that. Observing what's going on. If you hear a signal, you can also, or signaling devices. If you hear a signal, but you don't know what the cause of that signal is, observe what's going on. If you see smoke and flames, well, you obviously need to evacuate your students. If you don't see any smoke, any flames, or any inherent danger, think about what your next act should be, and that goes back to communication. We have multiple platforms of communication. We just saw a demonstration of one. We have cell phones, we have radios, we have messengers, we have pictures. We all, all our staff should have their red, green, and yellow posters. We have messengers. So we're not going to lose the ability to communicate what is the threat, because that dictates the response. Runtard Park Public Safety agreed that unless there's a threat from a fire, just reflexively drilling by taking your students outside and lining them up somewhere, first of all, doesn't serve a practical purpose, and again, could put them in harm's way now. If we have an actual fire, we will evacuate parts of the campus should be evacuated. We also don't want to be in the way of the response to the fire. So you've heard mention having Runtard Park Public Safety come and observe the drills. Well, I know one of the changes was, hey, if we have a fire and we have to have the students evacuate, they need to not be in certain access routes. The last thing, we need to 1,500 kids in the way of a fire truck getting to the spot that it needs to be to put out the fire. I do want to point out that we have lots of drills going on. Information about our drills that we are willing to share publicly are here. And the underlying education codes and talk about them via fire. Here on our website, and again, as you heard, principals take this very seriously. At the top, we've added "observe, think, and act". Observe, think, and act. Observe, think, and act. We have also on here the information from the United States Department of Education, which looked at the Homeland Security's website with regards to how to respond to a shooter, which was really tailored to adults and office buildings, not schools. And so they wanted to look at it through the lens of a school. And so, again, the information that should be shared publicly is here. And again, emphasizing observe, think, and act. The ability to respond in an active shooting situation is critical, and how you respond is critical. One of the officers of Runtard Park Public Safety is trained specifically in this area and has done training with school sites, and can lock a school with a school principal and have a situational awareness and understanding. For instance, if you're at Waller Runtard Elementary School, which is made out of concrete block, you have a lot more safety and security if you do choose to act by locking that and staying in your classroom than you do if you're in a portable. They provide very little safety, unfortunately, in a shooting situation. One of the things that we also want to make sure all of our principals and staff talk about is, is the run, fight, the run, hide, and fight protocol that you see here, doesn't mean that run is your first and only choice. Again, it might be the safest, fastest thing that you can do is lock down your classroom. And when you make that choice, you're putting, you know, everything you can between the students in your classroom and the ability you get in that classroom. In looking at the after-action reports from some of the most heinous, most recent events, Columbine Sandy Hook apartment, there were lives saved in Sandy Hook because the classroom was locked and locked down. So that can be a choice. That shouldn't be forgotten. If you're in a part of the campus where you can run and you can get away, well, then that might be the best choice. And unfortunately, if you have to fight, then you have to fight. So we have that information here. We went over all of that just to get an idea again of what their thinking is. And I would say we were definitely on the same page. Already mentioned in your board packet, the safety drill requirements, and I've gone over those. Our principals keep us informed when they're doing drills, what type of drills they're doing. They're all practicing the new types of drills that we want them to do, and they keep logs. And then, recent and upcoming training, some of them were mentioned. We had some principals and other staff go to a pretty extensive earthquake training. Most recently, March 1, as I said, we met with Runtard Park Public Safety yesterday. There's a continuity of operations training that took place today. We have three upcoming school violence and active shooter trainings. Two are listed in the packet, April 6 and 9. And that's put together by a Bay Area Collaborative on school and public agency safety. And then we show one sponsored by Resit, but with the same trainers here in Sonoma County on April 20. A threat assessment training coming up on April 18, violence and active shooter intervention. So those are ongoing, and thou certainly entertain any questions?
One thing you said that I was different with a little bit, just you said the fire department comes to fight the fire and only the fire. First thing the fire department does is assess life safety. Then they, then they come save the building.
Correct.
So I think you're, you know, just a little technical thing. And then the second thing, did the police department or anybody talk about resource officers? Because unfortunately, or fortunately today, a resource officer stopped a shooting. So I'm not, you know, I don't know how I feel about that. Having an armed guard at the school for safety if it gets to that. But I mean, that, in today's situation, that resource officer shot the shooter. So did they mention that?
Yeah, we had a list of other safety considerations that we talked about. You know, we've heard a lot of people talk about fencing. We've heard people talk about a single point of entry. We've heard two people talk about badges. We've heard people talk about...
Talk about metal detectors?
We did specifically talk about metal detectors. Sometimes that might go hand in hand with a single point of entry. And of all of those, really the only one that they believe could make a difference, and it's not necessarily that it would make a difference, but could make a difference, is a school resource officer or an armed officer on campus. When I saw that this morning, I immediately think of those of us that were at the meeting yesterday. It may not, you know, it's more well-known that there was an armed officer at Parkland. Unfortunately, that did not stop the situation. There was an armed officer on campus in Columbine. He was on break, and he was sitting in his car. So even having an armed officer or a school resource officer, there's still logistics and protocols that kind of have to be thought through, you know. We have not had a dedicated school resource officer here in Runtard Park for a number of years. And when we had one, there was only one. And so we have, you know, more than one school. So even there, it's, it was somebody rotated around. In our relationship with Runtard Park Public Safety, as we've represented tonight, we invite them on campus all the time. I've said to the chief and to his commanders, hey, if you're beat cops, you know, if there's nothing going on in the city and they just want to stop in at the campus, do that at any time so that their presence is, can happen at any time, is expected, is not a sign of an emergency. They can interact with students, talk to them, see what's going on. And so they are a fairly regular presence, but we don't have dedicated one or more school resource officer anymore. That's something that there was a lot of funding for years ago, and that just, that funding's gone.
I want to invite both Samantha and Calvin to ask any questions. I sort of advised them to stay through the safety presentation because I thought it was very important for students to hear everything that we do here, because they're the conduit to populations at our high schools and really any other students. So, you know, your thoughts, questions, don't mean to put you on the spot, but now would be a great time for interaction if you have anything to interact with.
I mean, I don't know. There's a lot of information that I just found out. I did not, I was not aware about how much there was. I mean, yeah, I just found out a lot. I didn't realize there's that much planning behind everything at our schools. And I mean, I do remember what happened last year at SSU when there was someone on campus that they thought was shooting, and I remember their quick response. But, you know, yeah, I just...
And I was from this, I should point out that Sonoma State has its own police force, and we meet with them and interact regularly, and don't win, he does. Part of their safety consideration, they're very aware of tech having on that campus.
I know that right now, a lot, and we've currently met with one of our administrators and talked about safety on our campus. And there are a lot of students who don't feel safe. It was actually one of the questions we put on the ballot for the elections is, do you feel safe on campus? Yes or no? And we were, I feel like a lot of students, like we should just inform them of our safety plans, that we have them.
I have a question. Dr. Haley, you said that the schools keep logs of drills?
Yes, I said that.
Is there a difference between a lockdown drill and an active shooter drill?
Yes.
How many active shooter drills have occurred in all of the schools in our district in the last seven years?
If you wanted to know that, that would be helpful to know that in advance. We do a number of drills. We rarely involve students in those types of drills because of the nature of them. It's most important to drill with our adults to make sure they can work through a scenario and a situation and then participate in a debrief. So with regards to... So with regards to active shooters, we rarely involve students. With lockdown drills and other types of responses, yes, we do.
So how many active shooter drills involving students total in the last seven years have there been in our schools?
I can't give you that information.
I wanted to ask Principal Carter that.
Well, let's just say none. I mean, I believe we involve some, but again, that's not our emphasis. Our emphasis is on working with the adults, which was part of my meeting yesterday again with Rockland Park Public Safety.
Well, it's part of the...
Well, I'm answering it for you, so...
So there are none in the high school, involving students?
I said for this, for this presentation, we'll go with that, yes.
Okay. And in terms of the comprehensive deadline?
Are you referring to the March 1 deadline for the school site to review its plan? That would be the responsibility of the principal.
So if a principal doesn't get the comprehensive safety plan in by March 1, that's their responsibility?
They have the site responsibility to review the safety plan, that is correct. But they have the responsibility to annually forward it to the school district for approval, which is also correct.
So Tech Middle School did meet that deadline this year?
That is incorrect.
Was the site safety committee legal?
I...
It's on the website.
That's fine.
And then, okay, so now, so getting into the March 1 deadline, you have said several times that, in correspondence with me, that the district does not have to make those comprehensive safety plans public by March 1. You have, you said in an email, you have time to edit them and approve them, right? And you, this year you did it on March 14.
So it's difficult to have a dialogue with you because you put words in my mouth, and I've pointed that out multiple times at multiple board meetings. I've put the ed code on there, I've explained it to you at board meetings, and even prior to your being on the board. I'm trying to explain it tonight. I'm not, I don't know if you're not hearing me, or you just have a different perception. But I'd also like to point out, the code certainly contemplates and even says that they can be updated throughout the year. And I think you've heard tonight that as thinking changes, as protocols change, the plans change. We don't just have a plan, and it's like, well, that's it, that's all we're going to have for our plan for a year. They're constantly being looked at, constantly being updated. And quite frankly, I'm going to echo the sentiment of our staff that's here tonight. I'm highly offended by the nature of your questioning and by the assertions that you've made. Providing a safe learning environment is something that every single staff member, teacher, principal, assistant principal, A, everyone takes very, very seriously. And so you are offensive in that regard to imply it any other way.
I'm asking you a very simple question.
Well, you've asked it years and years and years, and I answered it for you.
Is there an annual March 1 deadline for the school sites to have their comprehensive safety plans ready? Does that exist? Because that's on your website.
Did I answer that question already?
Yes, there is. Now, you also say you don't have to make those plans public on March 1, that you have time to edit and approve them, right? Because you approved them on March 14.
They are required to be forwarded to the district annually for approval. That is correct.
Okay, so where in ed code does it say that you have this extension?
I'd like to...
Do you side quest?
I have, and it's here, and you can read it, 32280. That's that order, it's on our website. I'm sorry you don't understand it, I've done the best I can to explain it. I, it's beyond me why you can't get it, but I really don't want to keep explaining it to you.
So at the board president's discretion, I would just like to move on.
I'm ready to move on, I feel like we're talking in circles. I thought I would shorten things up a little bit tonight and focus on what has changed there since first interim. There hasn't been a lot of change, so it didn't make sense to me to spend time going through the entire report. You've all got it, it's online. Anyone who wants to read it certainly can. The big changes in the current year, 2017-18, we have added a transfer of $119,050 to the reserve for economic uncertainties in Special Reserve Fund 17. So that's a transfer from the general fund to the special reserve fund. It takes the special reserve fund to a 4% level, which is called for in board policy in all years of the projection. As a reminder, Fund 17 is basically our savings account. The reserve for economic uncertainties is supposed to be there and stay there and never be touched. And we hope we never have a recession that requires us to touch it again. The other major change since first interim is that we have added a $200,000 contribution to the PARs trust for our retirement medical benefits. Board may recall that we made our first contribution at the end of last fiscal year, that was $100,000. We are achieving our goal of higher earnings than in the county investment pool, our earnings so far have been about 5%, which is very promising, given that we earn about 1% in the county pool, so that money is segregated and will grow over time. Obviously, we have a long way to go to get to our $10 million liability for retired benefits, but it's important to start and continue. The other thing to note, the board is aware, of course, that we settled with RIPSIA, management confidential employees. Those salary agreements were approved at the last board meeting, but because that is so close to the time of preparing first interim, we did not have time to go through our budget and update every line item. There are thousands of line items in the district budget, and rather than rushing, make errors, we have just segregated that money in ending fund balance. So that money is shown as assigned on your fund statements and in the multi-year projection. It is basically a reclassification of money that was in the budget stabilization reserve at first interim. The big fiscal news for us and for our districts throughout the state is the governor's budget proposal for 2018-19. Very good news. In his last year in office, the governor is proposing full funding for the local control funding formula. For us, that is an increase of approximately $1 million in 2018-19 over first interim. In addition, he is proposing one-time money, again going towards the backlog mandated costs, and that's about $1.6 million. Now, we do know it's early in the budget process, it is possible that money will be reallocated to different things, but the track record of this governor is that he gets what he wants, and his January proposal's been pretty close to what's in the May revision of the funding state budget. The only thing I've heard is that there are some legislators who are saying that money, instead of being one-time, can be ongoing. That would be quite something if they convince Governor Brown to go along with that. That would be, nothing has happened so far. But any of the guidance we're getting from school services, from PICMAT, from the county office, and the Association of Counties to grandparents, all are recommending that we go ahead and include these numbers in our budget, so we have done so. Any questions about that? So the required discussion for the board is really to talk about reserves. The state measures that gave us the increased budget, top 30, basically are saying, okay, there's excess reserves. This concept is kind of silly really, because reserves, you can't really have too much. But in any event, if we have more than the bare minimum 3%, we're supposed to talk about why? So the first thing we've already touched on, part of what's in our reserve or our ending fund balance is for the negotiated salary increase for RIPSIA and our management confidential employees. It's, because in 1718, it was retro only to January 1, that amounts $278,000. In 1819, it includes the amount for, from the 1718 2% increase, plus the 2% for 1819 for RIPSIA, plus the additional days for RIPSIA. So that comes to nearly $1.3 million. And then in 2019-20, those are ongoing costs, and there's the additional cost of that same 2%. Well, it's really 4% on the salary schedule and the additional days in 1920. So that's $2.3 million. And we have that money, well, that's why we were able to agree to that settlement. In addition, we are finally putting on the books an instructional materials reserve. We have really been on a pay-as-you-go model for instructional materials, where we take lottery money, what we can accumulate in parson tax money, unrestricted lottery money, and that's how we fund our instructional materials. We have always known that at some point, that's not going to be enough, so we're starting to say, okay, we're going to set aside some money, mostly out of unrestricted lottery, and say we're going to have to put that towards next, each summer's purchases for the following school year. So that is also included in the ending fund balance. Now, we take a little bit different approach than some districts. Some districts have big instructional material reserves and they don't spend them. We think that the money that we get, by and large, should be spent on the students who are here now. So it is a balancing act between current needs, future needs, and reserves for the future. But that's the approach our district is taking. So then we go over our other reserves, apart from the salary agreements and apart from instructional materials. We still have reserves. In the general fund, we no longer have any unrestricted or economic uncertainty reserve because we transferred it to Fund 17. We still have our budget stabilization reserve, we still have the special reserve fund, so our total unrestricted reserves, you can see last year were 4.5 million. This year, we made the choice to spend some of those reserves, so we're down to 3.4 million, which is still a 5% reserve. Then next year, it grows a little because of the one-time money from the state and the increase in LCFF to 6.4%. And then in 1819, it dips a little bit again to 4.66%. But we are very healthy, certainly in the best shape we've ever, we've been in in many, many years. So in the multi-year projection, there are, why do we need a budget stabilization reserve? Well, we just negotiated an agreement with CSCE for classified employees for 1718 and ongoing. That will come to the board for ratification next month, assuming the membership ratifies it. So we have to have money to cover that, and that's part of it, is budget stabilization. There are uncertainties, the same old uncertainties. You know, we're going to get a new governor in November, and what will they do about the LCFF? What is our enrollment projected to be? You know, we've held kind of steady, we could grow, we could lose some, you just don't know. Health insurance premiums, we've projected them at 3%, which is kind of the average over the last few years, but there were years where it was nine and a half. We just don't know. So, and we don't really control it. So that's something that is a reason to have a budget stabilization reserve. So this year, it's 721,000, next year about a billion five, and then it drops off in 2019-20. Part of why it drops off in 1920 is there is no one-time money projected in 1920, because it's too soon to say if there would be any. So all those reserves are assigned in the multi-year projection, so if you look, you would have to look down at the bottom of the form. So overall, our reserves are over 4% in every year, we need more policy. We do still need more to cap and manage cash flow. You know, the Government Finance Officers Association, 17% recommendation. Bond rating agencies compare our district and all districts to the statewide average, which has grown. So it used to be around 15%. As an audited actualist last year, it was up to 16.6% for unified districts. And again, as a reminder, one month's payroll is about 6%. So from a cash flow standpoint, having reserves is part of how you have cash on hand. So the best approach will be to continue as we can to put some one-time funds into the future, into the reserves, so that we grow our reserves a little bit. It would be good if we could get up to 6%. But we'll have to see, it's always a matter of balancing community needs. So things that we have to take into account as we plan for future years, many of these things have been on the list and will probably stand the list forever. Instructional materials, I think we can all agree, we never have too many instructional materials. So there, we know we've got a math adoption coming, and we will need to buy materials. There's no doubt about it. There will be adoptions in other subject areas as well. Technology for students and staff, we have used our bond funds for that, but we will need to establish a replacement cycle. Technology doesn't last forever. We may have bond funds available, but there might be a point in time where we won't. So we need to bear that in mind. We continue to have to look at the cleaning schedules for our schools, certainly as we have the tag building. Have to plan on adding people to clean that massive space and take care of it. IT staff, as we roll out more technology, we'll probably need more people to support it. So those are all things we plan for. The contribution to our routine restricted maintenance account returns to 3% in 2020-21. If a district ever got money from the state for modernization or new construction, which we have, where that requirement was set at about 3%, we have to take 3% of our money and put it in this special account called routine restricted maintenance. During the Great Recession, the state flexed that requirement, and basically you are allowed to put in as little as you put in during 2014-15. We're putting in about 2 to 2.25% right now.
Not 2014-15.
Yeah, that was the four-year. It's the four-year now.
Now?
Yes, yes. So that's, we, that's the minimum we have to put in. When it goes back to 3%, it will be about $650,000 that we have to come up with additionally. So that either has to come from the general fund or we have to find someplace else. Now, there is some debate as to whether that will be moved up, because the thought was that the flexibility would last until the local control funding formula is fully funded, which is slated to happen next year. So we will be waiting to see what's in the state budget act and how they address this. We would like to think that they're not going to move it up without giving us some more or some funding, but we just need to be prepared. We have another reason to have budget stabilization reserves. And then, of course, deferred maintenance is an ongoing need. Again, we've been able to use our bond funds for projects such as roof repairs and water lawn repairs and those kinds of things, but if we, time comes when we've spent our bond money, we need to have another source. Ongoing, we've talked a lot about the increasing impact of STIRS and PERS in particular, as well as health premium increases. STIRS is still slated to go to 19.1% by 2020-21. They've actually reduced the forecasted peak for PERS a little bit to 27.3% instead of 28.2, and pushed it out a little bit longer till 24, 2024-25. It's still a huge number. The only good thing you can say is we have way more certificate employees than classified. Oh, that's only 19%. So those are things we have to continue to plan for. And the minimum wage increase, it's currently at $11 an hour, I can remember. It seems like not that one ago, it was 8.25. So 11 now going to 12, and it will ultimately go to $15 an hour. Again, no one's giving us extra money to pay for that. Obviously, we've got to expand our staff if we do get increased enrollment. That typically means we need additional teachers. As we have more classrooms, that's more classrooms that need cleaning, and on and on. Growth, growth brings needs too. Funding our retirement medical liability, I talked about the OPEF trust. I am recommending that we start putting 1% in payroll for our benefit eligible employees towards the trust beginning in 2018-19. Otherwise, that's, we're in as good of times as we've experienced in recent memory. If we don't start now, when will we start? And if we don't start, how are we ever going to accumulate that $10 million? Once the money is in the trust, we can use the earnings on that money to make the contributions for retirement medical, and that will relieve the budget pressure on the general fund. So that's my recommendation, and that is what we are planning to include in the 2018-19 adopted budget. And then, of course, we always have to remember that there will be future negotiated salary increases, and we have to plan for that too. Any questions on that slide? All right, what's next? Well, same here, this time... Well, same here this time of year. P two attendance is due to the county office on April seventeenth. The governor's major revision of the budget will be announced around May tenth. We will be having our public hearings on the budget and the LCAP, LCAP first, because the budget must apply to the LCAP, at the June twelfth board meeting. The state adopts their budget by June fifteenth. Then we have to adopt the LCAP and the budget at the June twenty-sixth board meeting, and then there are always the possibility of state budget trailer bills in July, which sometimes have surprises. Any questions?
Couple things.
Yes?
First, I just want to congratulate you on another year not having to do with the interim.
Thank you.
I think that that speaks volumes of, I love you, and it frees you up to get the budget done before you retire.
Yes.
I also, you know, you know, as we're watching the districts around us cut programs, and you know, just last week, you know, Stoney Point Academy is now closing in the Belmond District just north of us, and, you know, we have some great programs here, and hopefully we can attract one of or more of their hundred and sixty students that they're displacing, because we're well aware from our own history in this district, when you close a school, it doesn't mean a student is going to go to another school in your district. We've done a very good job in rehabbing this district, both from a financial perspective and a district destination perspective. I think you played a huge role in this, one thing to mention.
All right, can I get a motion to accept the second, if you can, for, as of January third, two thousand nineteen?
Seven.
Can I have a second?
A second.
First and a second, are there any other questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item D, expense reimbursement for trustee from non-suiting to mediated agreement. So now you have to recuse yourself?
I'll recuse myself.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the expense reimbursement for trustee non-suiting to mediated agreement? Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
I have a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item E, acceptance of gifts and donations to the school president. For Maha Vista, in the, for art supplies from the Maha Vista PTA, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-four dollars. University Elementary Attendance Award from Double Decker Bowling for four, in the amount of sixty-five dollars. Lawrence Jones Monetary from Pacific Gas and Electric in Lori giving. Karen Tom Denson, two hundred and ten dollars. Thomas Page Academy gift card from Food Macs in the amount of fifty dollars. Technology Middle School, a monetary donation from Wells Fargo Community Support in the amount of sixty-five dollars, totaling five hundred and fourteen dollars.
I mean, we accept gifts and donations to schools in districts in the amount of five hundred and fourteen dollars.
A second. A first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item nine, public comments. Please note the meeting is recorded and livestreamed at www.crcusd.org. Members of the public are entitled to speak on matters not on the agenda here at the occasion of the meeting when called forth by the board president. Please state your name and address and keep your comments incited, free, and limited to three minutes or less. A maximum of twenty minutes is allotted to each subject not appearing on the agenda. If there are more speakers than time allotted, they are each offered the opportunity to speak for an equal duration up to twenty minutes. The Brown Act restricts the board from considering any items not appearing on the posted agenda. Avery Reed.
Good afternoon, my name is Avery Reed, and I live at four six seven Gagio Lane in San Jose. But I'm a sophomore at Creole High School.
I'm David Hoss Moody, and I'm a junior at Creole High School, and I live at nineteen six seven St. Mary's in San Jose.
So we are here today on behalf of Schools for Climate Action to encourage you to pass the resolution acknowledging climate change as a children's issue. Our high school is the first one-planet school in the world. Over the past two years, education about climate change has been integrated into my curriculum, which has inspired both of us to stand every day and ask that climate change education be integrated as a standard for all schools in our district. Over the past few days, increased human activity has caused a negative shift in our global climate. We cannot continue this manner for future decades. Every day, my fellow students and I are reminded of the climate crisis that our generation faces. We see news announcements about the shrinking ice caps and rising sea levels. And just as past year, Sonoma County has been the subject of these drastic climate crises with the wildfires in October. We saw our family and friends lose homes over a climate-related issue. Our vision is to create, to create a learning environment in which students are not intimidated by these issues, but inspired to make a difference. And in order to do this, we must equip the students with the education and the resources to effect change. So this is a large undertaking, but to begin, we implore you to pass the resolution that would implement climate justice education as well as causes and solutions to the climate crisis into our district's curriculum. In addition to the educational aspect, this resolution would recognize the need for sustainable facilities in schools and a community in which students can advocate for the climate justice that we all deserve. It is our goal for two thousand school boards across the nation to pass similar resolutions by Earth Day, twenty nineteen. So far, Spastu Unified School District, Sonoma School District, Sonoma County Office of Education, and the Roth Valley School District have all passed similar resolutions. And most recently, our school board and the West County School District have also passed resolutions, each with varying levels of commitment to action. So we ask you to join us in our movement for climate justice. By passing this resolution, you will be addressing the issue that looms in the future for all of your students, a resolution acknowledging climate change as a children's issue. You will be preparing them to meet the challenges with the platform of knowledge and justice. In the near future, our workforce will be overflowing with environmental engineers, sustainability architects, and green energy technicians. This resolution will equip your students to be at the forefront of these advances. But, most importantly, as educators, you will be promoting the well-being of your students, their children, and all subsequent generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, God, good evening, President Farrell, Dr. Hayley, and board members. My name is Jack Buckhorn. I'm the executive director of the North Bay Labor Council, and also the secretary of trade for the Sonoma Mendocino County Building and Construction Trade Council. I live at five eight five four on Monteverde Drive, San Jose. And I'm here tonight to discuss a problem that we found with a company that you guys have authorized through Prop thirty-nine, the California Clean Energy Jobs Act. Let me stress that, it's the Clean Energy Jobs Act. It was created by closing a loophole in corporate tax code. It triggers prevailing wage, and it requires for the cleaning, for retrofitting of light fixtures, which they're a contractor that you guys authorized to come in here and perform, to be done, and to be paid prevailing wage. That prevailing wage requires state-certified electricians or state-registered apprentices to perform that work. No one else can perform that work under the California statute or under the California Clean Jobs Act. So it came to our attention that there was a contractor in here doing this work. We had one of our agents from IBW, local giving five five one, come and talk to those workers. I believe most of them spoke Spanish, so we were lucky enough to have a bilingual organizer on staff that was able to talk to those workers, and they were making fourteen, fifteen, maybe sixteen dollars an hour, I'm not sure about the benefits. I can assure you that there is no prevailing wage that covers this work that pays fourteen, fifteen, or sixteen dollars an hour. This contractor is exploiting those workers. And if there's one thing I can never stand for, and I'll be, I'm going, let me first recognize these wonderful educators that gave us this presentation on safety and their passion for their students. I applaud you, brought tears to my eyes, and it makes me proud of the work you do. I'm just as passionate about workers, and when I see a worker being screwed and driven into the ground in dust because some contractor would rather put that money in their pocket than help, or than basically adhere to the law, then, then that brings out something in me that, that I have to stand up and address. And that's why I'm asking you today to bring justice to these workers, to make sure that you do your part as the trustees responsible for multi-million dollar budget, to make sure that the work is done correctly with the right people that are qualified, state-registered, and that the worker gets the pay that the state of California requires. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Ben Sisza?
I'm Ben Sisza, fifty thirty-six College. I'm here as a member of the public with some very pressing concerns over the legality and honesty of the previously mentioned PG&E on-bill financing LED retrofit project at Maragon Elementary. The district's website, specifically under the minutes posted for the August fifteenth meeting for twenty seventeen, has on their agenda the PG&E on-bill, the loan agreement, and it stated that, say, two hundred and thirteen thousand dollar project. The hyperlink to the agenda packet for the meeting on this website directs me to the September nineteenth meeting. This misinformation, I have found, doesn't just stop at the website. I've made two attempts to basically view and inspect these records here at this school, at the district office, to which I was turned away, because it goes against the letter of the California Public Records Act, for me as a member of the public, to inspect these records. Also, the PG&E on-bill customer financing and contract handbook declares that the customer is responsible for choosing, choosing a contractor. Why wasn't the California Uniform Public Construction Cost and Accountability Act contractor list you have posted on your website? Why hasn't any of those contractors given a chance to bid this work? Everything about this project, in my opinion, has a red flag to it. A simple search of the Department of Industrial Relations, PWC one hundred awarding body postings by the Katati Run Park Unified School District, has projects of forty thousand dollars listed on here. Why isn't the two hundred and thirteen thousand dollar project listed on here? California Labor Code seventeen twenty dot six clearly declares this project as public work requiring prevailing wage. California Labor Code seventeen seventy-three dot three A one declares that the awarding body must notify the DIR about any public works project within thirty days, or at latest, the first day the work is performed. Why weren't they notified? Why isn't it on their website? Also, the contractor listed, Eco Green Solutions, has no certified payroll records. This is a requirement for prevailing wage work. Why are there no prevailing wage postings or certified payroll postings? California Labor Code seventeen twenty-six requires an awarding body to take cognizance of violations of any of the language laid out during the course of a contract and to properly report any suspected violations of the contract. Why hasn't there been any reports made to the Labor Commission of California? There's also another thing, seventeen seventy-one, Labor Code seventeen seventy-one, as well as the DRR, Public Works Case Number twenty fifteen dash zero one six, and that declares maintenance work, which as we previously stated, this project is, is prevailing wage.
Thank you. Keith? Guy? Yes? All right.
Good evening, thank you for having me. I'm Keith Diaz with Sheet Metal Workers. I live at five nine one zero Wyomolway in Sacramento. I'm a business rep for Sheet Metal Workers. I want to reiterate, my fellow brothers and sisters that are about the wage, that basically what's happened to the fellows that were working on the job, getting paid, you know, substandard wages. You know, and I've, I've been a business rep for three years, and I'm a business rep in this area in Sonoma County, and I take pride in trying to help people put people to work. With that, and having those people come up from LA and work and get paid, you know, substandard wages, and try to make Sonoma County strong again, that's not a way to make Sonoma County strong. With that said, I just wish you guys would look at that a little stronger, a little foot more through. On a lighter note, I've been wanting to come to you and speak to you about apprenticeship. We show up every year to the CSBA, and I probably, hopefully I've spoken to one or two of you, but I have information, apprenticeship into trades is a very, very good alternative to going to college for some of your kids, students that want to go to college. It's a great living, it's, they don't have any college debt, and it's not, it's not a job, it's a career. So I have information on our apprenticeship, I look, my business cards in there as well, and I'm sure, I've got Frank here with the plumbers and steam fitters and the IBW, they would be happy to come talk to you in your schools, your high school, Rancho Katati, and actually do a presentation about getting into the trades and getting into the apprenticeship program. So with that, I thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm going to go this one. Oh, John McTaggart?
Too bad. Not too bad. I'd also like to, before you start, Dr. Hey. I'd also like to take a personal point of privilege to thank the educators also for what they said earlier and how they treat our kids. Nancy, are you still here?
She's still alive.
You know, she took care of my little guy over there at Evergreen for a long time, and I really appreciate what you said earlier, it also moved me, so thank you. John McTaggart, Bruner Park, I live on San Antonio, and I got a little guy, we're at Lawrence Jones right now. I also am here to talk about violations at Margaret Han Elementary School. We did go over there, we talked to the workers, and we just try and find out the facts, that's about it. We don't want to do anything but find out the facts and then try and educate everybody of what happens. So, there's no state-certified apprentices on site, crew of at least twelve, no apprentices in the crew mix, no training going on, we're a training educational facility here, you know, we teach people, there's nothing happening over there. No prevailing wage being paid to the workers that were getting between fourteen and seventeen dollars an hour, driving up from Los Angeles to be here to do this work, when we've got people here that can do the work. No safety protocol in place. I'm an electrician, been an electrician twenty-two years, I know what safety is and I know what isn't. So I was able to witness the isn't part. This did not go out any public bid, you know, it's unfortunate, because none of our contractors or workers or local people around here had an opportunity to go and do this work. No permit was pulled for the work, which is kind of scary. No outside inspector, again, this is the part where you've got to be careful in. Facility's director said he was the inspector. As of Friday, when we had a conversation, he said he had yet to inspect the work. That was three days of work that happened that he hadn't inspected yet. We had kids in the classrooms, in these classrooms where the fixtures were already fixed in. Retrofitted lights above our kids' heads that were installed by unlicensed workers. Does the facility's director hold the appropriate credentials from the state of California to inspect electrical installations? When will the inspection take place? What is the inspection form the district uses when they choose to inspect electrical work in-house instead of using a state inspector? The lights are dimmable, they're zero to ten dimmable, yet there are no dimmable switches. Was there any thought put into dimmers? Have you thought about the potential litigation from parents of children who are in classrooms with lighting fixtures that are overlit? Overlit is as bad as underlit, this is going to be a problem if they're not dimmable. The district has a list of approved contractors, the contractor that the district selected to do work at Han was not one of the approved contractors. The contractor PG&E states that it's a ten-year contract, and the warranty on the fixtures is only five years. Electrical engineer in Sonoma County for major and minor projects says retrofitting light fixtures does not necessarily make them Title twenty-four compliant. Many retro kits fail within five years, most kits are failing long before their estimated lifetime. We have submitted a request for verification of prevailing wage on this project and the Evergreen Campus to the Director of Department of Industrial Relations, he regulates prevailing wage. Stop work, we're asking, until we have a DIR judgment of whether or not this is prevailing wage. The money, total money for this contract, two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Based on the wages we know from talking to the workers, they're getting paid about fourteen to sixteen bucks an hour, seventeen dollars an hour, eighty-six hundred dollars. Hotel per diem, about forty-five hundred. Light fixtures are made out of china, they're a hundred bucks each, six hundred of them comes to sixty thousand dollars. Add everything up, it's still below a hundred thousand dollars. So it's two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars that was spent, where is the extra hundred and thirteen thousand dollars? Thank you.
Thank you. You love Reyes? I'm sorry.
Good evening, my name's Oculus Reyes, and I reside at seven zero three zero Sentera Way, Katati. I'm a membership development rep- I'm a membership development representative for the IBW and a state-certified electrician. I visited Margaret Han Elementary alongside state investigators to speak with workers from Eco Green Solutions who were performing electrical work. Most of the workers were not fluent in English, so I served as an interpreter to facilitate the completion of the questionnaire provided by state investigators. Each worker was asked to state their job title and describe what type of work they performed. They all said their job title was lighting installer, and provided descriptions of the work, including that they were making electrical connections and LED lighting fixtures. More specifically, they were retrofitting the fixtures throughout classrooms in the school. During my walkthrough onto the job site, I observed them working on ladders and making electrical connections in the lights in different classrooms. The workers from Eco Green Solutions were also asked about their wages. The workers stated that they were receiving wages ranging from 14 to 17 dollars an hour. These wages are over 50 dollars per hour less than the prevailing wage for electrical work at this time in Sonoma County. Paying such low wages for electrical work is an affront to electricians in this community. It robs these particular workers of the wages that they rightfully owe, and it helps depress the wages for electrical workers in our community at large. Given the high cost of living, especially housing in Sonoma County, and the great demand for electricians, neither workers nor our community can afford to have this important job devalued. And as a Latino worker, and somebody who was undocumented, some of these guys that I spoke to were undocumented, and they're being exploited, and that just makes me sick to my stomach knowing that this is happening in my community, and I just can't deal with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey there, I'm Jared Mumm, I live at 2361 Michaela in Santa Rosa. I'm also a certified electrician here in Sonoma County. Something that Akula just mentioned there is that some of these folks are very easy to exploit. What are they going to do? I mean, realistically, what can they do? They're afraid to take a stand, they're afraid to go to the authorities, and I'm going to take a slightly different angle, right? They don't have any upward mobility on top of all that. They don't have the option of being in an apprenticeship right now, that's not something that's being afforded to them. Everybody doing this work should be a state-certified electrician for that electrician's apprentice. Being an apprentice means that so long as you continue to go to school, and so long as you continue to get your best on the job, you will receive the best training out there, and you will eventually become a journeyman, and you'll be able to earn a sustainable living in your community. Something that we often say to educators is that, you guys often take them to about 18-years-old, and they're going to fly off to college, and then some of them don't, some of them, some of your graduates will end up in our apprenticeship programs here in the area. We know how to get these people to 65, that's what we do, and beyond. These people that are currently working on one of your schools and will be working on more of your schools unless you stop it, they don't have that, right? And I've seen them, a lot of them are young men, and they don't have that pathway to journeymanship, they don't have that pathway to 65 and beyond. They're very aggressively held down. If, even if they decide, hey, I'm done with this, I'm done working for you, the very first question their next employer's going to ask them is, hey, how much you making? And that'll be the biggest raise they ever get. And if you start off all the way down here, that $2 an hour raise, and it still doesn't take you anywhere near a living wage, and they can rinse and repeat that for decades, and eventually get to 65, have no means to retire, God knows what their healthcare situation looks like. And I mean, I don't know how many of you folks came through construction, but I mean, the wages that they're being paid is, it's a crime, literally, it's a crime. And the fact that they don't really have a way to get out of it is just terrible. And I think that it's wrong that that's happening in education facility. So I think that was worth it, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Frank Girdon?
Hi, everyone, my name's Frank Girdon, and I'm also a business rep for the plumbers here in Sonoma County. My address, at the office and school, I oversee plumbers, 3473 Santa Rosa Avenue. I was first contacted by John, and I'm just going to call him John Mack, because I'm my original, I can't pronounce his last name. And he explained what happened the evening that he came and approached these workers, and it rang true with me because I, and I have had a conversation with a couple of you about this issue that I have. It directly ties into what John is concerned about, what I'm also concerned about, is prevailing wage. And there is a project right now going on, your biggest project here in town, I'm sure of it, is the auditorium at Rancho Catati. I had several contractors that bid that job, they lost the contract, they did not, they were unsuccessful. When I contacted them and sat down and asked what went on with the job, I didn't get it, so I was confident that we're going to get it. The explanation I was given was that their bid on the plumbing and mechanical work on the job, which is what I represent, their bid on it was $1.9 million. The .9 million, the $900,000 was their entire labor allotment. This is a company that's been doing business in Sonoma County for 105 years. It's a first-class company that does things legitimately. And they said, Frank, we were beat on this bid at, that's being general contracted by right contracting at the auditorium, they were bid, they were beat by their entire labor allotment, their entire labor amount was what they were beat by on the contractor that's now doing the work out there. So that contractor's doing that work for free. So again, it's a prevailing wage job, I don't know what's going on, I was recently contacted this past week, the same company that's doing the work out there that I have begun looking into, I don't want to use a strong word, but investigating, was also caught this past week in San Jose doing something very similar, some sort of investigation in San Jose on the same, on the same plumbing contractor that's doing your work for you at the auditorium at Rancho Catati. So I'll get to the bottom of it, but there's a common theme here that is kind of whining itself through our stories, and the prevailing wage isn't being pleased as good as it should be, so it's just a concern. I appreciate your time tonight, thanks very much.
Thank you. All right, item 10, we're going to convene to close session, there are no public comments for this item, we are going to go to conference with agency labor coordinator, Robert A. Haley for CSBA, public employee appointment, and help employees whistle this plan due.